All right, good evening, everyone. Good evening. It's a beautiful summer night to be standing indoors at a public hearing. It's welcome to the public hearing. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. This is the Oak Bay's public hearing. I'm Kevin Murdock, the mayor of Oak Bay, and I'll be chairing tonight's public hearing for proposed bylaws 4732 and 4733. I'll start off by acknowledging that we are in the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait Salish people, specifically the Lakongan-speaking people known today as the Songhais and Esquimalt First Nations, and that their connections to these lands continue to this day. Before we begin, I just want to advise that this public hearing is being live webcast, and the recording will be archived on the district's website in future. So personal information, including your image and personal opinions, may be collected and disclosed as part of council proceedings on the video. When presenting to council, if you're acting as a representative of a resident of Oak Bay or speaking of another party, please ensure you are not disclosing any personal information about that person, for which you don't have any consent to do so. This is a slightly more formal start to this meeting as part of our efforts to clarify some of the rules around public hearings. Just a quick overview of our protocols here. I just want to outline some of them for tonight's public hearing. I just ask everyone, let everybody know that anybody wishing to speak at the public hearing will have the opportunity to do so. I'm going to ask that people limit their comments to five minutes or less, and there will be opportunities to come back a second time if you wish, but we won't restrict anybody's ability to talk. We just ask that comments be respectful of council, the staff, and of other members of the public. Please direct all your comments to me as mayor and chair, and they should relate to the related and proposed bylaws. Once everyone has had a chance to speak, those wishing to speak again may do so. The purpose of the public hearing is to give council an opportunity to listen to the views expressed by the public. The public hearing is not intended to be the opportunity where you're learning about the details of the application. There are details available through the previous minutes of the previous meetings and presentation, and the staff reports that are available. For the information of all of you present here tonight, a public hearing binder is available with all written submissions, and is available for review if anybody wishes to comment on those submissions specifically. As chair, I do reserve the right to conclude any presentation made by any member of the public or council or the staff that does not relate to the proposed bylaw or is disrespectful towards any other person or if you're repeating points that you've already made. Finally, council members are here to listen to the public's opinion on this with an open mind. No one here has prejudged the outcome of this application. And I'm just going to go, you'll see on our agenda, this is again a new format for us on the public hearing agenda, trying to lay out a bit more specifically what the process is, but we'll step through the numbers one through seven. The planning staff will introduce the proposed bylaws. A motion will be made to receive written submissions that were provided and distributed prior to the public hearing. They'll then have written submissions provided to the district after 3:00 PM that are not included in the agenda will be read aloud, and a motion will be made to receive those. The applicant will have the opportunity to present their proposal. The council will have the opportunity to ask clarifying questions, and members of the public will be invited to provide comment on the bylaw. And then a final call will be made before we close down the meeting. We then recess the public meeting, and council will then deliberate in future. I just want to point out, oddly enough, tonight, we have a tradition of dealing with significant land use issues that we have all councillors present, and you may notice that we're missing a chair here on the left-hand side or your right. So councillor Zelka's unfortunately got caught as been a major accident on the highway, and he's stuck in that. We don't know when he's going to arrive. So procedurally tonight, I've confirmed with members of council that everyone's here on next Monday. So procedurally, we're going to have the public hearing here tonight on 602 Newport. Council will not be deliberating this item until next Monday, at which point councillor Zelka will have had a chance to review the minutes of this meeting, and then will take, consider a third and final reading and adoption at that time for consideration. So we'll get through all the public hearing. Please don't leave. But we actually won't have considered this item until next week. Just give you a heads up on that, so you don't get shocked and surprised. And that's, does all of council understand that? Clear? Okay. Sorry, it's the first time they've really heard it as well. So thank you very much for coming out tonight. And with that, we will kick off the hearing here or the meeting. So I'm just, item number one on our agenda. If I can just invite the planning staff, Ms. Jensen, to introduce the purpose of the bylaws 4732 and 4733.
Thank you, your worship. The first item on this evening's agenda is bylaw number 4732, which is a bylaw to consider a heritage revitalization agreement for 602 Newport Avenue. If adopted, it would retain the residence in its current location and require ongoing maintenance of the home. It would also facilitate a two-lot subdivision of the entire site with one single family dwelling located on each proposed lot. The existing home would continue to be accessed from Newport Avenue, and the new proposed home would be accessed from Linkle's Avenue. The process to designate this home is running concurrently through bylaw number 4733. The existing home at this address was designed and constructed by The Craftsman Company Limited in 1930 for Oswald Dorman and his wife Clara. The residence is characteristics of a Georgian revival style with its broad-hipped roof, stucco cladding, port-cocher, and multi-painted wooden sash windows. Through the revitalization agreement, zoning bylaw requirements would also be relaxed for minimum parcel sizes, lot frontage and lot width, and paved surface for both lots. For the rear and exterior interior side lot line setback for the existing home and for the front lot line setback for the proposed home. As part of the agreement, the owner will enter into a covenant to be responsible for ongoing maintenance of landscaping within the Linkle's Avenue Boulevard area. As well, more than 15 new trees are being added to the site, bringing the tree canopy cover up from approximately 15% to the targeted 35% to 45%. Given that bylaws 4732 and 4733 are running concurrently, it may be appropriate for council to receive input from the community on both these bylaws at this time rather than separating the process.
Thank you very much, and we will do so. Next up, we have written submissions that were provided to us in our package. And with that, is there an updated agenda? Just so everybody has had a chance to see that?
Your worship, there is an updated agenda, and I think that our staff are rapidly trying to upload that as there was a very significant amount of correspondence that was received today.
Not for this, but for another item? Is there, I'm just seeing it here now, so it is loading up. So we'll consider that. We need to have a motion. But I would actually like people to just refresh their agenda packages. Most of this correspondence is not related to this item, I understand.
There was significant correspondence for both the item tonight on the public hearing and one later on council.
Okay, so just as well, we're not going to consider the item here tonight. Then we'll have a chance to read those. So we will read all of the written submissions that are provided to us. Has everybody had a chance to refresh? Yes, we're all good? Okay, so with that, can I have a motion to receive the written correspondence?
Second.
Moved and seconded? All those in favor, opposed, and opposed? Next, we have a reading of new submissions. So these are submissions that were received after 3:00 but did not make it into the written agenda package?
Your worship, there was none.
There's no more? Okay, thank you very much. At this point, we have the applicant presentation, so I would invite the applicant to present the proposal. Where would you prefer people to stand for the presentation? There's a slightly different setup at the table? Why don't you do that? And if you have your architect or other member here, they're welcome to come up at the same time. That's, the mic is live, so just feel free to. If I can just ask, and I'll ask everybody the same, if you could just state your name and the municipality of residence before you speak for the record, and then please go ahead.
Pat Battles, Oak Bay. Your worship, councillors. I've been the owner of 602 Newport for the past 31 years. I have sensitively updated and restored the home over the years, but it is now time to downsize. If I were to sell, the possible outcome for this property is that a much larger new home will be built as the existing footprint is small in relation to the lot size. So I'd like to preserve this home and garden as it is well-designed, enhances the Newport streetscape, and has a rich social history. Many of us have seen friends move out of Oak Bay in order to find a one-level home with an easy-care garden, which permits pets, for example, as they prepare for future mobility issues and caregiving needs. While designating 602 Newport as heritage, I hope to build a two-bedroom accessible home facing Linkle's, which I can live on one level. It will have provision for a lift to an area for a caregiver in the future, but for visiting family more immediately. A woodland garden also accessible as planned. Native plants, generous tree canopy, including adding five Gary Oaks, edibles, and as well as beneficial insect and bird attractants will be planted. This garden will be able to cope with climate change and avoid regular gardener's visits as there will be no grass to cut. This will improve the present view from Linkle's as the backyard of the current house has much asphalt and a garage built decades later than the house itself. With the bus stop only a few doors down at central Newport, this new home and garden should not only provide me with many years of enjoyment, but will fill the needs of others in the future. I've been encouraged by the outpouring of support from those who share my vision of a sustainable and inclusive community. I'd like to introduce John Kay and Nicole Parker and Jessica Allerton back there, and I would like to thank them for their hard work that they've done on my behalf.
Thank you, Ms. Battles. Mr. Key, did you?
Thank you. I believe there's a PowerPoint in here. Can we? Page down. Yeah, let's trade.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins.
Sorry, I'm a Mac person. Your worship, council, my name is John Kay. I'm the architect for the project. I live in Victoria. This is a site plan for 602 Newport, an aerial photograph. The Newport Avenue is on the right, Linkle's is on the left. The existing house is toward the Newport end of the picture. There's a garage, which Pat mentioned, toward the rear of the property. Our intent is to undertake a heritage revitalization agreement, which includes designating the house and a new dwelling on Linkle's. The intent of this was to construct a new retirement home, including provisions for aging in place. The building is scaled to permit the existing house to dominate the site. The lot would be subdivided, as mentioned. One thing I would like to mention is, in my view, there's been ample opportunity to have this reviewed by the community. We had a neighborhood meeting with a good turnout, and that was last September. The signs have been up since about that time. I think this application has been well-publicized. Oops. There we go. It's missing one. Sorry, there is a street view of Newport, but Newport is remaining unchanged, of course. This is a view of 602 Newport taken from Linkle's. We're very aware of the rural nature of Linkle's, as mentioned, Pat has lived there for over 30 years. And I think we all share the concern of this pretty unique street in the middle of Oak Bay. Its narrowness, lack of sidewalks, bad pavement, which produces automatic traffic calming. I think it's a very significant element in the community. We've had several meetings with parks and engineering regarding underground services and any changes to the Boulevard and to the street width. And what you will see later on in the presentation is a result of those discussions that we were responding to their direction. I'll be brief with this data sheet. The bottom right is kind of where the key numbers are. Site coverage is well under the maximum allowed for the new lot at 22%. 30 is the maximum. Building height is well under the maximum. There is one interesting statistic in this, and that's the floor space ratio, which is .395. It's just under the .4 maximum. This is due to the attic and the open-ceiling living room area, what I would call an atrium, being included in the FSR. And it's just a product of the Oak Bay planning bylaw. They are, of course, not actual floor area. Without these being considered, the FSR is .31, which I think is quite low. The usable floor area in the house is 1,957 square feet, and the atrium and attic add another 520. So I think there's been some confusion in the community about the actual area of the house, and I believe this explains that. There are variances, primarily for setback and paved areas. These variances have been considered in developing a landscape plan, and I think ameliorate any limitations on the normal setback requirements. I would like to also mention, the house does have a small footprint, as I mentioned before. .22 of the lot coverage. And there are also subdivisions on both Linkle's and Newport. These have been done over a period of time. So this is not a new intrusion into the community. There is a history of these subdivisions. I don't know what the history is, but they're there, and they seem to have fitted into the community. So the planned view of the subdivision, the property line is roughly slightly toward Linkle's, tending toward the middle of the site. The proposed Lot A, which contains the existing house, has no changes at all. The driveway, port-cocher, the house itself are unaltered. Lot B, which is the new building, sits more or less where the current garage is located in terms of setback. It obviously has a larger footprint. The driveway access matches the current driveway. There is a substantial Boulevard on Linkle's, which is a product of the narrow street width. That shows to the left of this illustration. As Deborah mentioned, the house was constructed in 1930, the existing building, by the Dorman family, and is a good example of Georgian revival, very symmetrical. I think an attractive building. It's largely unaltered, which is, I think, remarkable. It's in excellent condition and is an integral part of the Newport Avenue streetscape. We had a statement of significance and a condition report prepared. We worked with Don Luxton and Associates. Don is a well-known restoration consultant based in Vancouver and did work here early on and is very familiar with Victoria. Part of the request of council and as part of the designation process is if this is successful, the house would be seismically upgraded. And we're fine with that. This went to the Heritage Commission and who motioned approval. So the landscape sketch. Pat is using a landscape designer named Rob DeGrove, who I think is known in the community. And he came up, his instructions were to produce a woodland garden heavily planted. The area, the rear yard now, is mostly grass, so a fairly benign environment, and we're trying to redevelop that. There are no trees being removed. There's one sycamore at the bottom right of the new lot, which is protected. There are some small shrubs which will be relocated. The instructions were to provide privacy to the existing residents, the existing house, and the adjacent neighbors, and of course, to conform to tree coverage requirements. We had, as I mentioned, detailed design on Linkle's. There's a removal of invasive species, mostly ivy. And the new planting consists of native plant material, native mock orange, ferns, knick-konk. One item I would like to mention in terms of access to Linkle's is the driveway apron will be gravel screenings. It will not be pavement. So I think that contributes to the rural nature of the Linkle's and the new building. This is a set of floor plans for the new building. The main floor is on the left. I won't dwell too much on these. There is a couple of issues. I think the idea was to produce a compact and highly-resolved dwelling, which is appropriate to our client's space requirements and potential future accessibility needs. The house opens very much to both front and rear yards to allow access to gardening, which is a major interest of the client, and to take advantage of sunlight at different times of the day. One issue which has affected the design a little bit is clearances for accessibility. You can see some circles on the drawing, and those are turning radii for wheelchair access, including in the bedroom, master bedroom, in the bathroom, and in the kitchen. So they do have the result of adding some space to the footprint of the building. There's also provision for a lift, and that adds a little space as well. I mentioned the issue of the FSR. The height of the central living area is an integral part of the design, and I use that from time to time to make a small building feel larger by combining the upper and lower floors and by, rather than building square footage, to build in a little more height into the building. These are exterior elevations. The colors, I can assure you, won't be those. Anyway, there we go. Our intent here is to have high-quality materials naturally with a minimum of maintenance. To that end, we've specified a standing-C metal roof, which would actually be kind of a gray or kind of zinc color, I guess. There are some cement board panels as accents, which are the darker blue panels on the elevations. The remainder of the house is pebble-stucco, and that's done intentionally to relate this building to the existing house, which has the same finish. Privacy has been considered as well. There are windows on one end wall, but they've been kept to a minimum to maximize privacy to the neighbors. Generally, the glazing and outdoor access goes to the front and rear yards. Perspective. So I'm going to wrap this up as a, I guess, a concluding statement. The subdivision of this large lot is in accordance with the growth strategy for Oak Bay for sensitive infill development. There has been some conversation that this project would set a precedent. I don't believe it does. The existing house is designated, there may be, and also, of course, the property fronts on two streets. There may be a couple of other examples of this, but I think they could be treated as this should be on an individual basis. And I'll turn to the community plan. I think this proposal strongly reflects the goals of the OCP, and I'll work through those. The first goal is work toward climate change mitigation. As we all know, we're in a climate emergency. And the result of that is we can't continue to throw away the embodied energy in an existing building, which has got an unlimited lifespan in its excellent condition. A small house, at the same time, that building, because it's quite small and because it's on a large lot, is very unlikely to survive in our current economic environment. The second issue, and they're related, is to conserve neighborhood architectural heritage and ambience and to conserve Oak Bay's built heritage. And I think those statements are pretty clear that we're following those guidelines. The next one is, and this relates more to the new house, although I could include the existing house, is to support diverse and inclusive housing options. So we're providing, by retaining the existing house, a somewhat more affordable family-style house. With the new building, we're providing a housing option for, I would say, empty nesters or people like that, allowing aging in place and another way of fitting into the community. Another aspect of the OCP is to consider infill development to allow more density within neighborhoods while conserving neighborhood character. And I think this project does that in spades. I think the increase in density is not large. I think the conservation aspects are clear. The OCP also mentions specific innovative approaches to housing, including second dwellings on larger land parcels. Along with that, it points out that the population growth in Oak Bay is an older demographic unlikely to be looking for large two-story residences. And I think we're trying to, I think we're trying to present a model here of a type of housing. I mean, it's unique, and it's, of course, in its own way, but it is providing a model of how infill might take place in Oak Bay. Might to conclude. This project increases housing options, including affordability and inclusivity in the community by retaining an appropriate-sized family home and adding a residence suitable for aging in place. We believe this is an appropriate way for the community to increase housing options, combining heritage preservation, new infill, and a housing type which answers her need in Oak Bay in terms of size and adaptability.
Thank you, Mr. Key. I just turn to council now. Does council have any questions for clarification, either of the applicant or of staff? Council, breathway?
Sorry, I just, could you just clarify for me the actual square footage of the house? I think I read somewhere that it was 1,700 in some document, but I thought I heard you say that it was 1,957 plus 520.
I believe that's correct, yeah.
1,957 plus 520. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or clarifications? I just have one question for clarification of staff, and that is just the question of width on Linkle's Avenue itself. There's some question about the widening included of that, of Linkle's Avenue, included with this application. Can you, I think I'll turn this to staff. What is the widening that's proposed here, and why is that necessary? I'll turn to Mr. Haran, who's director of engineering.
Yes, thank you, your worship. So the, when analyzing the requirements for the road, we also consider the whole aspects that we would for any application related to subdivisions. So subdivision development bylaw, so all of the services to service the new lot, which include underground infrastructure, but also the road itself. So from lot light to lot line for the property. So in this case, we're talking about that stretch of Linkle's Avenue, which is currently, it varies through that area, but just under five meters at this point. So in a typical situation, we'd be looking at a street that would be significantly wider. But in this area, what we're trying to do is achieve a minimum standard where two cars that are approaching each other head-to-head in the middle of the night would be able to pass side by side. So that's where the minimum, in this case, of five meters was arrived at.
Thank you, sir. And how wide is it now? Do you have that? Just for comparison, it seems to be. Ms. Jensen?
So currently, the existing road right-of-way width is at 18.2 meters, which is actually a little bit. a little bit more than what we were looking at for, as 18 meters for, for the entire road right-of-way. The paved surface itself varies quite a bit, as Mr. Ran mentioned, going down Linkley's Avenue. In front of the, this particular property, it ranges from approximately three and a half to four and a half meters.
The proposal is five. Okay, thank you. Any other question? Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just another question for clarification from, from staff. I don't know if it'll be from the Planning Department or the Director of Engineering, but the lot, as it presently stands, does span both Newport and Linkley's. And so the applicant is presently entitled to have entrances to the lot from, from both streets. So should the applicant, even on the existing lot, the way it is, wish to perhaps expand the garage area? Right now, it's a garage that looks like it has been unused for some period of time. But if they wish to do so and wish to have an entrance, would the, the drive would probably still have to be expanded even to accommodate that type of addition? Would it not?
Turn to Ms. Jensen. I think it's more of a driveway question than a road question in that situation.
Sorry, I just want to clarify. So you're asking if they wanted to build a garage on the smaller lot facing Linkley's?
Well, I, what I'm, what I am trying to ascertain is, right now, because the existing lot does span both streets, you could actually enter the, the present lot from both directions if you wanted. The laneway has developed over time, it at least appears to me, because that portion of the lot has not been in use, but had, if it was put into use and, and the applicant wanted to, to have another accessory building that was used all the time, that would still require review by Planning Department as to entrance from Linkley's even to that part, as opposed to what is there existing today.
If I can reframe the question, just so I'm clear. The question is if, if there is a replacement garage built, that, would there be any, would the current driveway suffice, or would that have to be required changes? Mr. Haran?
Yeah, through chair, so we're, we're just having a quick discussion to make sure that we're answering the right question. I think the question is, so separate from the application that we're talking about tonight, if this was a completely separate situation where the, the homeowners were looking to have another way to access the lot as it currently exists, could there be a driveway that accesses from Linkley's Avenue? That's the question. So that would be like a, a separate question that would come from the driveway access by law. So similar to, there are some, some rules and guidelines in that by law about how much paved surface you're allowed to have, how many driveway accesses you're allowed to have, and variances of those come to council if they need to be changed. But I haven't looked at this particular situation from that perspective, so I can't, I don't think I can weigh in right now about what would actually happen in this case.
Thank you. Can I?
Counselor Patterson?
And just another, another question on this, and it comes from the presentation. I note that the combined total footprint of the two buildings on this lot are less than the potential could be for a lot of this size if it was not developed. Is that correct?
Calculators out. Where's the, have you, have you done that, that math? Looking at lot coverage or floor area?
I'm really looking at lot coverage, because I think that's, that's what many people are concerned about, is there's been discussion as to whether the, the two buildings take up a, a, a larger portion of actual coverage on the lot itself. And based on what I've read in the application and the, the drawings presented, this actually, even with the two buildings, takes up less lot coverage than
I'll ask the question.
Other applications we've seen.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Patterson, staff. Ms. Jensen?
Sorry, there's been some going back and forth here, so I want to make sure I'm answering the right questions. So you're, to, to clarify, if the lot continued in its current use and if they wanted to extend what they have on the lot, what could they do? No?
No, what's the...
No, sorry.
I'll, I'll reframe the question. So what is, is the, is the combined existing house plus proposed new house lot coverage equivalent to more than or less than would be allowed if the lot was left as a single lot with a single family home built upon it?
Okay.
Could I try and answer that?
I'll get it from staff, just because I think it's, it's probably appropriate to get the number. If you have it top of your head, I guess I can let you.
Close.
Okay, I'll, I'll let them answer it. They're, they're just doing the calculations now.
I'll answer half of it while he's crunching the numbers on the other one. So as one single lot currently with the RS2 zoning, you could have a maximum of 30% lot coverage, which would be just over 400 square meters, which would give you an FAR, floor area ratio of 535 square meters.
The total for the two, if you're taking the point two, just for rounding it up, is approximately, taking the total lot is 1,337, the total site coverage would be 266. So there's quite a substantial uptick for a single-family house, replacement house. I think, is that what you were trying to get to?
No one uses calculators anymore, that's the problem.
To follow up, if you look at the two lots as separate lots, the numbers work out exactly the same, 401 square meters for lot coverage.
That's what's allowed for the two lots, but is there, do we know what the two buildings combined actually make up in terms of lot coverage? We're looking to compare what the two buildings as proposed are compared to what a single-family home would be allowed to be built on that lot.
I can answer this.
Okay, I'll turn to Mr. Key.
Currently, on the single lot with the existing house, the site coverage is 11.6%. With the subdivided lot, the coverage, site coverage goes to 20%. The site coverage of the new building on the new lot is 22%. So if you take those as averaging, say 20%, because to keep the math simple, that gets to my number of 266 square meters.
So we're, we're at about 20% lot coverage and, and allowed on those two lots to be 30% if it was a single home.
That's what you're trying to get to, I believe.
Which is significantly lower than 30%.
It is.
That would be allowed if you just looked at it as a lot that was a vacant lot that you were developing.
That's correct.
So the two houses combined are significantly lower than a single house could be on this lot.
That is correct. I'll just stick with the, anything else? Counselor Patterson?
This question I have is really about the agreements themselves, and it, it would be to staff. In future, if there were any proposed changes to the heritage-designated house, any proposed changes would still have to come back to council under the terms of the HRA, correct?
Ms. Jensen?
If the owner of that home was proposing to do something that required a building permit that's affecting the heritage characteristics of the home, yes, it would come back to council through heritage alteration permit.
Thank you, Mayor, and for the patience of the staff.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Green?
Yes, thank you, and through you, Mayor, to staff. One of the concerns is the environmental and sort of rural ambiance of, of the lane or street on Linkley's. On the Linkley side, I just wondered, could you tell me what the impacts of potential paving might be on the vegetation that currently exists?
Mr. Haran, that's an answerable question.
Through you, Chair. I'll do my best to, to answer how we've looked at, at this question for this particular application and Linkley's Avenue in general. And unfortunately, so I'll start with, with a couple of things and end with, with a statement on environmental impact. Hopefully, that'll answer your question. If you stand on Central and look south along Linkley's Avenue, what's happening underground there is, on both sides of Linkley's Avenue, there are storm mains underneath the ground, and they are far enough to the edges of the road, which in many cases, they go, it goes underneath and through, it's basically in the boulevards. So underneath a lot of the vegetation, underneath driveway accesses all the way along Linkley's. In the middle of Linkley's Avenue, there's a sanitary sewer, and that basically follows the middle of the road, and then just to the west of that, in between the storm drain and the water main, is a, or sorry, between the storm main and the sanitary sewer main is a water main. All of those are roughly 100 years old, built in the 1950, 1915 timeframe. So the reason why I bring that up is because this question about this particular property we're, that we're discussing tonight, it all is reasonable, makes sense why it's being debated, but I just want to make sure that everyone has the same understanding of Linkley's Avenue in the future, as we look at what has to happen in that area going forward, say for the next 50 years. There will be a time, and I don't know when exactly, but the, the, those mains, all that underground infrastructure is now beyond its life cycle. It will need to be replaced. So as we consider what has to happen in that area, we just need to have that understanding of, of, of what the future's going to look like. It won't, we won't be able to keep it looking exactly the same indefinitely. So back to the question of environmental impact of this particular question on the table tonight, we are aiming for just that lot line area to create, to, to do the paving for that, you know, lot line to lot line in terms of north to south and five meters wide in that area. So environmental impact would likely be, I don't want to weigh in of whether it's going to be minimal or higher, but it's, it's unlikely to cause any major changes, because we're not making, we're not making the road much wider than it already is. I think the environmental question will be around the longer term. What will this, what will this avenue look like between now and 50 years from now?
And supplemental question, please. Mr. Haran, through you, Mayor, to Mr. Haran. And Linkley's is defined as a street, a road, a corridor. Can you give us the legal definition of Linkley's, please?
Well, our records show Linkley's Avenue as an avenue. So based on our, in, in, in terms of the right-of-way, in the municipal right-of-way, the, the area that's owned, it's much wider than what's being talked about today in terms of the paving. In many municipalities, in situations like this, the municipalities would exert the full, their full rights in terms of what's owned, and as they look forward 50 years for uses going forward. It includes exerting rights around encroachments, whether they're desirable or undesirable encroachments on the boulevards, for the main reason that they impact what could happen later in terms of rehabilitating what's underground in terms of infrastructure. I don't know, did I answer your question there?
Yes, I really appreciate the clarity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haran. Counselor Breathwaite, and then Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor, to staff, I believe also. The allowed paved surface area in the front yard, that is 25% paved surface? So I noticed that on Lot B, they actually say front yard paved surface is 30%, so they'll have to have a, a variance for that? Is that correct? And then I know that it was mentioned that for the driveway, you won't be paving, and that's probably because you'd have to increase that even more so to, from 30%, because the driveway would be in the front yard, would it not? Would it be considered the front yard? Yes, so, so that's why you're looking at the pavers for the, for the driveway.
I'll put that to Mr. Key. I think it's still counsel's P. Mr. Key?
Yeah, I think the, the intent of the gravel screenings was to soften the impact of the approach from Linkley's. It was not to, that's out in the, sorry?
If you could just speak a little louder into the microphone.
I'm away from the mic. I'm sorry. The intent of the gravel screenings was to soften the appearance of the approach to the house from Linkley's. It was not to, that's in the boulevard anyway, so it would not affect the calculation. The calculation is, in fact, affected by the driveway once on the property and a patio and a walkway. Those are all counted as, as part of the percentage, and that's why we're over.
And just one other question. Is there, are there any other variances that this application for Lot B would be looking for? I guess that's to staff.
Ms. Jensen?
Thank you. No, the, the variances are, as are set out in Schedule III of the Heritage Revitalization Agreement by law. I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Key's comments regarding the paved surface. So the way the zoning by law reads, when it speaks to paved surface, is it's a hard surface, so that might be gravel, it might be asphalt, it might be concrete. Those are all considered the same under the zoning by law. In terms of the variances for the existing heritage lot, that variance is in there for the existing driveway. It's not that there's anything extra going in, it's for the existing scenario. For, for the proposed lot accessing off of Linkley's Avenue, staff actually decided to take the, the worst-case scenario on this one, because you do retain the RS2 zone, which has a larger setback for its front yard. The RS5 zone is a shorter setback, and that's what the variance is based on. We took the, the just over seven meters to calculate the front yard area, and that works out to the 30%, which is the variance is being asked for. The RS2 zone, if we applied that, there would be no requirement for a variance. It would come in at just over 20%.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, your worship, and, and through you to staff. Just picking up a little bit on some comments that Mr. Haran had made, I, I was curious, just in terms of the servicing that would typically be required in a, in a subdivision situation, I'm just referencing this, this section in the report that talks about working with the applicant to deserve, to determine the services that would be required. And so I'm, I'm just wondering, maybe just for the edification of the people who are present, what type of services would typically be required in a subdivision situation? You know, I, I understand the concept of the road widening, but are there other things that would typically be enforced in this situation that are sort of deliberately being omitted, or at least reconsidered in, in light of the specific situation on Linkley's?
Mr. Haran?
Through you, Chair. In other subdivision and development situations, like different ones than the ones tonight, the, the typical, the, the by law requires us, and we, we do this, where all, the, the full breadth of the scope of the requirements of off-site servicing, it's hard for me to get out how I just tried to explain that. So what we require is, so in the, from the, along the frontage of the property that's proposed to be subdivided, the off-site servicing is, is updated water main, rehabilitated sewer and storm mains, and then sidewalk and road until the, the center line of the road is, is what's usually allowable under the, the subdivision development by law. In this case, because it's being considered under Heritage Revitalization Agreement, there is some flexibility to relax some of those, and then the requirement to make the road up to the standard, which is as a minimum for a local road, because the OCP designates Linkley's Avenue as a local road. So instead of 8.5 meters, we're saying, instead of the minimum for a lane, which is 5.4 meters, we're saying five is acceptable for this road. But that is making an exception under this HRA kind of analysis.
Counselor Appleton?
Just thank you, Your Worship, and again through you to staff. Just picking up on something that Mr. Haran mentioned earlier, are there any issues anticipated with making service connections, from essentially new service connections for a new building into infrastructure that, as you mentioned, is quite aged? So I'm just wondering what considerations are in place for that?
Mr. Haran?
Through you, Chair, that's a good question. I think that the question is the same, and the answer is the same for all of the, all of our subdivision development type of scenarios, so it's not necessarily something that drives a decision in this one. We do have to consider, because we, the subdivision development bylaw only allows us to affect the, to ask the developer to pay for the infrastructure upgrades along the frontage of the property. Sometimes there's conditions or situations downstream from the property which affect the use of, say, maybe there's a capacity issue, or maybe there's some other situation. So in this case, it's very, it's a normal situation for us to look at not just what's in front of the property, but downstream, to assess the impact of a potential development on the rest of the system.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And with that, I think, no more questions of the applicant, or Counselor Patterson?
If I may, Mayor, just to ask one more question on this. The bylaws that are proposed really deal with Lot A, and the heritage building, protection of the heritage building, and the designation of the heritage building. Could we clarify, please, what documentation we use to provide certainty that the applicant completes the construction of the new dwelling and landscaping substantially as is proposed in the plans that are presented?
Ms. Jensen?
Thank you. Typically, what we would do is attach it to a citing and design covenant through the subdivision process. Council has seen these regularly, I anticipate it would be very similar.
Thank you very much. I do want to get to the public here, so I think we exhausted our questions at this time. Thank you very much for your presentation. You are welcome to come back at a later time in the evening if you have just questions raised that you wish to respond to. So at this time, I'll just invite anybody wishing to speak to the items in front of us, to come forward to the microphone. I believe we're coming to the stand-up microphone, is that correct? Where we have a timing light for five minutes to give you some sense of time. Again, your name and comments will be recorded in the streaming. So just come forward, and if you can just also write your name and municipality of residence on the sheet, that way we have the right spelling for the record going forward. It's helpful if you have a clear opinion, if you want to state that you're in favor or opposed to the application, and then provide your comments.
Can you hear okay? Kristen Gill, Oak Bay. I do live on the street, just a few doors down, so I'll be honest about that. And I think a number of you know me as a heritage advocate, and someone who cares deeply about the green spaces in our community. And despite how seductive this might feel, I just can't support this project, not just as a neighbor, but because of the subdivision, and that's what I came to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a very concise statement, thank you very much for that. Anybody else wish to come forward and address council? Please come forward. You can form a short line if people want to get up and talk.
Hello, my name is Wyn Miles, I live in the 600 block Oak Bay. Actually, my family and I have lived there for over 30 years. I just had a question, I submitted a letter on July the 4th, and today, because I didn't see it on the submissions for today's meeting. So can I be assured that it has been added?
Yes, so the July 4th one is because of our late agenda piece got added here late on, I think, agenda today.
So I won't repeat that, because I think most of that's been said with regard to the HRA and other specifics. What I wanted to speak about today was, tell a little bit of a short story about Island Road, in that Island Road and Linkley's are often mentioned together as part of the walking path that many members of the public use. And as I said, we have lived there for over 30 years, and back in 1987, the 600 block of Island Road looked a lot more like Linkley's than it does now. Island Road was a gravel road. At some point in the next few years, it was suddenly paved. We weren't asked to consult it, it was just paved. We were disappointed, and others were too, as one of our neighbors said, "We paid for a country lane." So when we moved to Island Road, the development of the Todd Estate was in progress, and we were, and that was done very well. We were pleased to see the communal area of the Todd Estate located closest to Island Road, because that gives a setback from the houses to the Island Road itself, which, as I say, is used as a walking path for many people. In 1992, after much community discussion, the Elkington Estate was developed. After statements, and I'm going to be very brief, so, after statements about developing 11 lots versus final six, and rooting the service lines up Calvert Crescent, which is now a path up to the park, and opening Calvert Crescent for vehicle access, a group of 80 or so community residents came together as the Friends of the Anderson Hill, to lobby council with regard to their preference for the development. In the end, a portion of Calvert Crescent was closed and became part of the estate. Three of the 11 original lots were purchased, replaced the closed portion, and added to Anderson Hill Park. Calvert Crescent was not developed, and remains to this day as a forested trail to Anderson Hill Park and part of the Centennial Trail. During the construction of the Elkington Estate, the existing vegetation along Island Road was impacted, and in some areas, for example, across the street from our house, paved gravel paths, I mean, sorry, gravel paths were laid out for the parking of the construction vehicles. It was very busy, as you can imagine. The paved area was widened in some areas, and it was noted that people drove faster when it was paved, when it was widened. Letters were written, and promises were made that the vegetation would be reinstated, and it was, although it took a number of years. So in the 32 and a half years that we have lived on South Island Road, eight new houses have been built, one large but very tasteful addition has been added, and recently one new lot divided off. The point I want to make is that infill can happen gradually, be insidious, and builds on past changes. One of the main problems I have with the proposed development on 602 Newport is that it sets an expectation, or you can say precedent, that the Heritage Revitalization Agreement automatically allows for rezoning and a subdivision. As I understand it, the HRA process and rezoning are not necessarily connected. And just from what I heard during the architect's presentation, when, or actually, it was, I'm sorry, I don't know this gentleman's name.
Director of Building and Planning, Mr. Haran?
Oh, Haran, okay. They were saying that it would have to be widened to allow two cars to pass safely. On Island Road, it isn't wide enough for two cars to pass, but we have pull-offs, you know, in strategic places, and people use driveways, so we just use courtesy to allow people by, and that way it doesn't have to be paved wide. And also, with regard to future paving or widening for the various services, I don't see any reason why the vegetation couldn't be reinstated after that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I've just asked, if people don't cheer, or boo, or clap, just, we want everybody with the different opinions to come forward and feel safe and comfortable here, just to be respectful of all speakers and all opinions. Would the next speaker like to come forward?
Good evening, my name is Bill Robertson. I live in the lower part of Linkley's Avenue, so 790. I have lived there for over 30 years. Just to give you some historical things that have happened, and I support this subdivision, by the way, the house that is currently at 588 on the west side was moved to its current position in order that the house, a house could be built at 572. There is, a new house was built, it's quite bigger than the one proposed, at 622, this is again on the west side. And then a lot was subdivided on Island to create a lot on Linkley's, that's 648. So there's nothing new about the development that has taken place on Linkley's. And as far as the services are concerned, I don't think that one additional house will make any difference to the sewer, the storm, or the water. So for those reasons, I think this application should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward.
Pat Wilson, Oak Bay. I'm...
Welcome, Ms. Wilson.
I'm particularly interested in why it has to be five meters. I live on Brighton, I happened to be at Brighton and St. Patrick, and went through nine months of destruction on St. Patrick.
Ms. Wilson, could you just address your comments through to me, not to the staff?
I lived through the nine months of destruction and reconstruction and dust, and it's finished, thank goodness. But Brighton Avenue, I went out and measured it today, it's 150 inches, which is like 3.8 meters. I don't under, and we pass, we get two cars through there. You know, it's, it's, a lot of people walk there, and a lot of cars go along that. I don't understand why we would pave the front of this lot, the 100 feet, particularly if we're going to be tearing it out, putting new lines of whatever, sewage or whatever. It just somehow, why isn't this grandfathered in? It's the way it is. Anyway, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Hello?
Good evening.
My name is Vern Bigden, I'm a resident of Oak Bay. This application has generated a lot of correspondence. I started keeping track mentally, and then I realized I needed to map them. So I mapped all letters that included addresses made public until noon today, hence I am respecting personally identifiable information. I did not know that we could use the wall-mounted screens, so I brought my map on paper. I would like to thank my assistant for holding it up. I did not include all of Oak Bay in the map, I kept it to the nearby neighborhood. There are 42 pink lots on the map that are opposed to this application. There are four green lots on the map who have indicated support, although I note that one of them actually said that they weren't in opposition. I scored that as a supporter. That's greater than a 10 to 1 ratio against. It would have been 45 instead of 42 opposed, but the Langpaps moved east, and Mr. Sutherland Brown and Vincent Holmes have both passed away since signing the petition in opposition. Then if we expand our view further abroad, as the majority of the applicant's support comes from outside the neighborhood, we then look at the colored dots, and I apologize, they're a little smaller than I would like, but you can see them as red and green. There are 18 red dots opposed, and there are five green dots in support. That's over a 3 to 1 ratio opposed. So in total, if I count up the lots and the dots, there are 60 opposed and nine in support. That's a 7 to 1 ratio. I might presume that staff provide you folks with a visual representation such as this, but I wasn't sure, so I thought I would bring it up myself. Thank you so much, and thanks to my assistant.
My name is Pat Kell, and I live at 641 Newport, and I've lived there for 26 years. For the past five years, I have been working to protect Linkley's Lane from development. At the beginning of each council meeting, the mayor acknowledges that the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the Coast Salish peoples, and their historic connection to these lands continues to this day. It is 2019, and we must act as stewards of these lands. We've just had an election in this past year. We know that you share our values, because you said things during the election campaign that reflects the values of the citizens of Oak Bay. Preserving the environment is very important to all of us. The neighbors have shown overwhelming support to protect this special area, and we now ask Mayor and council to dismiss this HRA application for 602 Newport. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kell. Don't be shy, come on up.
Jan Mears, Oak Bay. I've served on a number of committees in this community, including the OCP as an advisor, when I first moved here. I chose to live in Oak Bay because it's a beautiful community, and we have many treasures here. We will change over time. I see a lot of brand-new homes with paved front yards, double-car garages. None of those come before this mayor and council for discussion. We see a lot of loss in terms of our green space, in terms of our tree canopy, and I know that is a very big concern to a lot of people. I think this application is actually brilliant for our community. I think it allows gentle densification, which is the only kind of densification we're going to see in a built-out community such as Oak Bay. It's a shame that every time an application like this comes forward, that it has to come to council, that it can't be discussed at the neighborhood level first, and can't be considered in other places, so the neighbors' concerns can be heard and incorporated. But I do think that this applicant and the architect have done a brilliant job for Oak Bay, and I hope it is not a precedent-setting model, but a role model for others and other parts of our community, and I don't believe there will be a lot of opportunities to do this, but I think it is one form of gentle densification we should support, so I urge you to support it.
Thank you, Ms. Mears. Please come forward.
I hadn't intended to come forward, my name is Vicky Turner, and I live in Oak Bay. I'm a retired Realtor, and I have followed real estate matters in 13 municipalities in the Victoria, Greater Victoria area, and I specifically came to this hearing tonight because I thought it was an extremely interesting concept, that this landowner is attempting to pursue. I think she should be encouraged, I'm for it. She is designating, appears to be designating the original home to a heritage designation, and using part of this large lot to build a retirement home for herself. And I totally agree with the speaker before me, that this is bringing density to Oak Bay, and is really not offending anybody. I really would like to ask the council and the people in this room, would they rather see both this home torn down and a huge new home built, because of the area of this lot, and the potential footprint of a huge home? Because I would imagine if this does not go through, that that's exactly what will happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just stay there and speak into the microphone.
That's fine, sure, that's okay. My name is Robert Campbell, and I live at 588 Linkley's, which is just behind the house that we're talking about, that wants to subdivide their lot and add the second house. I'm opposed to the application, I'm very opposed to it, because it would allow the new house to be built, and I believe, in spite of what's been said tonight, that it would be very detrimental to the attractive ambience and the wildlife habit along our Linkley's Lane. I also know that dozens of my neighbors along Linkley's, along Newport, along Island Road, and even someone around on Central, have all sent you letters now, and I know they're all opposed to it, so, you know, the figures that were just mentioned before, about, what was it, a 9 to 1, or 12 to 1, or something? That's what I think it is. Everybody, just about everybody's opposed to it. So I'm therefore asking you, Mr. Mayor and councilors, to do the right thing and deny the application at 602 Newport. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. June Beatty from Oak Bay, Central Avenue. I see this as a win-win. I think a lot of time, effort, money has been spent developing this application, and I think it's fantastic.
Do you mind just, yeah, write down your name, please?
Thank you.
If I'm not spelling, thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak?
Thank you. My name is Wendy Amos, and I've lived in South Oak Bay for 42 years, and I walk this neighborhood extensively. I'm currently on dogs number eight and nine as companions. And I can be a little bit long-winded, so I did choose to read my notes tonight. I love Oak Bay. I've lived, as I said, I've lived here for 42 years. I love the variety, the mix of old and new, the natural beauty, and the gorgeous gardens. And the walkability of the area is a huge bonus for those of us fortunate enough to live here, and especially in the area of Anderson Hill. It's always a draw. I have submitted a letter in favor of this proposal, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to underline a couple of points and to respond to some of the comments I've seen online from the letters submitted previously. Pat Battles is proposing what seems to me a reasonable subdivision of her property and the construction of an imaginative house that will support her and subsequent owners to age in place. There have been some references in the written submissions to the supposed financial advantage she would gain from this application, and I can't imagine that this will be so, and I don't think that should weigh in the discussion. She will eventually be selling a house with a significant covenant attached, and I assume that that will lower its value, and in addition, the process of applying for the HRA is itself quite costly. This is money she has invested without any guarantee of success. While it might be commonplace in a developer with deep pockets, I think it should be noted that this is an application from a longtime resident with a demonstrated track record of appreciation of the history and heritage of Oak Bay, and I think she should, she should be commended in having spent the last many years of her life trying to pursue this. Some of the comments and concerns relate to the potential impact on Linkley's. I don't live on Linkley's, I live on Victoria, but as noted, I know the area well. I also remember the development of Anderson Hill and the Elkington Estate. I've made it my business to pay particular attention in view of the neighbors' concerns. The drawings and plan for the proposed new structure show a house that's been well-designed to have minimal impact on the streetscape, and having read the Arbors Report three times and walked Linkley's specifically to check, I can't find that there is a major threat to the trees inhabited by owls or otherwise. In fact, the Arbors notes that there will be a net gain of canopy. A related concern expressed, and it's been brought up tonight also, is that this proposal, if approved, many more will follow. Thin end of the wedge arguments are always attractive, but they're not always compelling. I don't believe that that will be the case in this instance. My understanding of HRA proposals is that each one is designated to be considered on its own merit, and I believe that the Heritage Committee and council should be trusted to do so. I'm going to add the next paragraph. I considered long-winded whether I would say something about this or not, but it does, has disturbed me, and so I will add it in. When we choose to live in a collective, the rights of the individual are at times necessarily subject to the good of the whole. Deciding on the good of the whole is not necessarily the purview of a few people of passion. I think it's unfortunate when neighborhood disagreements such as this lead to tactics that are less than civil. And in this instance, I understand that misinformation was dispersed in several people who subsequently contacted Pat Battles, learned that the false story was far otherwise than they had been led to believe. The Friends of Linkley's have spearheaded the opposition to this proposal and apparently involved in the distribution of incorrect and misleading information, and the members of the group have been at the forefront of collecting signatures on petitions and in offering to write letters for others to sign. Not form letters, which are often used as adjunct petitions, but letters that can be personalized, giving them the weight of independent thought. I think it's sadly, we can all be led, myself included, into an emotional response without checking that the facts presented are correct, but I hope this will be taken into consideration when we're in the submissions and the number of for and against letters. I can't resist adding, my, my recent focus attention on Linkley's also led me to what I thought was a rather ironic discovery. At the point where Linkley's narrows to a single lane, there's a large double garage with a fully paved driveway from the setback to the street proper. To my eye, it was the most blatant impact on the tree and shrubby aspect of Upper Linkley's and adds hardscape to the lane. It's attached to a house on Newport, but the driveway housed a display of posters opposing the HRA. Every one, of course, is entitled to their own perspective, but I did think that this was a little bit rich. Your worship, it's your and the council's unavoidable task to try to balance the rights of individuals in the community. Under the current guidelines and bylaws and in line with the views expressed by many of the council during the previous election, there seems to be every reason to support this submission, and I very much hope that you will do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will be short and sweet. I'm a neighbor on Newport. We've only, I've only been in Oak Bay for four years. I love it. I think it's an amazing place.
Can we just get your name?
It's Tacey McLagan, sorry.
Thank you.
And we love it. We walk everywhere. We think it's a fabulous neighborhood. I think that this particular application is brilliant. I think that we need to have more places for people to be able to age in place in neighborhoods, and I think that if we, if we get rid of people because they can't live here and they have to go elsewhere, the neighborhood loses. And if we allow people to do this in this respectful way, I think we all win. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLagan. Next.
Frank Wilson, and I should write that down, shouldn't I? We've got a good name here.
Appreciate people managing to retain some humor in an hour and 15 minutes into a very warm evening.
I think you're doing very well, your worship. I live just four doors down from the property we're talking about. I've got no objection to this proposal. We live locally. As I've got no objection, in the context of this kind of meeting, and it's difficult for members of the council to interpret, I listened to the comments on statistics and the number of pros and against. You know, you councilors do know, you always have to bear in mind the people who don't care either way, and they tend not to come to these meetings. Do they not? However, I respect the different opinions. I just hope we're not going to have dissension on the street. I enjoy, for the first time in my life, having close neighbors. I lived in the middle of farms and fields for much of my life, and I appreciate the neighborhood, and I hope we don't lose the good neighborliness that is around. These things can happen in this kind of case. Our street's a pleasant, typical Oak Bay mix. Let's remember it's a mix. It's already a mix of large and small. It's a mix of properties that some would regard as perfect and some which are waiting for demolition and replacement, and that applies to properties within the stone throw of where we live, at the bottom of this street. Change is all part of what, what happens. We've only been living in the area for 12 years, and it's remarkable how much change there has been in that time. How many properties have changed hands very close to where we live? We never thought it would, there'd be so much mobility and so much change. Less than 200 yards away from the property that we're talking about tonight are two new developments. Look at those developments. Look at the size of those developments. Now, whether they will be in keeping with local architecture is debatable, but is everything always in keeping? There is change, and I think what we have proposed here are things that have got a good chance of being in keeping, because one will be retained, and the one that is proposed will be made to be as far as possible as defined in keeping. Speaking of the other ones, one of those new developments just up the road is so large that my young grandson thinks it's a hotel, and I think most people know it's what I'm talking about. I don't think the proposed development diminishes the ambiance and the amenity of those of us who live on Newport Avenue and enjoy, and enjoy Linkley's. It does not, in my view, encounter to any articulated council policy as existing. I see it as a reasonable infill with good intent. And by the way, that garage will be no loss at all. It is not an architectural gem. Alternatively, we may lose the existing property, and who knows what will replace it. Finally, don't worry about the owl. Please don't worry about the owl. I'm a farmer's son. I'm a country boy. Owls are remarkably resilient beings, and I've even consulted the local ornithologist on this, and he, he emphasizes that owls can cope. Don't worry about the owl. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I was going to, where we had a local ornithologist after, put it on my, my rotator.
With my name, it takes a little bit longer. So my name is Peter Juharknecht. I live on Bing Street, resident here in Oak Bay for the last 15 years. I took a few notes here on my phone, just listening to everyone and the presentation. I'm very much in support of this application, mainly because of these following points. It is a large lot facing two streets, which in itself is, you know, wonderful and unique, actually, to have a subdivision that faces two streets. It's quite ideal. Two homes on two streets is kind of a no-brainer. The application is retaining the existing home and will designate it as a heritage building, which is definitely a gain and win for the community. We don't have that often that homes of this quality can be retained. No trees have to be removed, which is also quite unique. Usually, trees are in the way and have to be replaced with others. There's a large boulevard along Linkley's, which will retain most of the, well, if not all, of the existing canopy and, and vegetation. Upper Linkley's is a street with other homes of even much bigger scale, as we've heard before. The new home is providing an important addition to our old and very slow-growing housing stock. Aging in place is one of the biggest challenges in our community. This application is dealing with this issue in a very sensitive and appropriate way and will free up a heritage home for new owners like a family. In my opinion, a number of high-quality proposals similar to this application is exactly what Oak Bay needs, to increase density in a sensitive, yet effective manner in residential areas. We can densify in these areas meaningfully, so we can add a home here and there. We have other areas maybe where we can have higher density, but not here. This is a perfect proposal for a lot and location and deserves appreciation and full support by council. In addition to this, don't have those notes, but I, I picked up on some earlier comments, and I, I do take offense by some of the flyers that have been distributed in our neighborhood. And I think we have to respect other people's opinion. If someone is sending out a flyer, have the decency to put your name under so that we can engage in, in, in conversation and not hide under some acronym or other name. And don't distribute something that is not accurate and creates, like, a very divisive energy in our community and neighborhood. So we have, I think, something very special here, and we have to be very civil about how we engage, and those flyers do not help. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Juharknecht. We'll all have a chance to come forward. But I do appreciate people being reasonably brief here, allowing us to get through a large number of these, these comments, and thank you for that.
My name is Alan Little. My wife and I have lived in our home on St. Patrick Street for 46 years. It's on the Heritage Register, and we appreciate anything that residents do to preserve homes worthy of being on the register, as this one is. We think this is a very sensitive and sensible project. We fully support it and wish there were more projects of this quality that are being offered. We're horrified at, at the thought of what could go on that lot, and we truly will appreciate your support in approving this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
Hello. My name is Stephen Atrey. I live in Oak Bay. I have a degree in botany, a master's in biology, and a PhD in plant biotechnology. I am also a licensed realtor. I will begin by saying I am in full support of the Heritage Revitalization Agreement for 602 Newport. 602 is a wonderful-looking house that is an asset to Newport and has a rich history. The front of the property will not be altered. I too have been dismayed by some of the signs and handouts going out with misleading information. These have been delivered through doors, including mine. The information is the very opposite from what seems to be being attempted by the applicant. I had a conversation with Graham Buffett from Building and Planning and wished to clarify some points. The first points I will deal with are mostly on one of the leaflets that was sent through my door. It comments on the loss of Linkley's as a safe, walkable, low-traffic rural lane. As far as I know, the truth is there are no plans to build a highway down Linkley's. The traffic will not change, or barely perceptibly, that it would be unnoticed. Another point, loss of Linkley's character with street widening and paving. As I was led to believe, the widening is for approximately five meters to provide a passing point for traffic, making it safer. The loss of laneway ambience for hikers, bikers, and walkers. The truth is, the ambience will not be changed. It will remain a laneway. It comments on less rainwater absorption. It is my belief that the new development will have a rainwater retention system which older houses do not have. This will result in more groundwater absorption rather than diverting it to the storm drains. Increased traffic roadside parking. I ask from what? Where will this increased traffic come from? Will people from Suk or Sydney say, "Oh, let's go for a drive down Linkley's," now that they've added a parking, a passing spot? Loss of habitat, including wildlife, owls, hawks, eagles, butterflies. The plan is to replant with native species and to bring the coverage up by greater, and I mean greater than is currently present. It includes the planting of five more garry oaks than presently exists. This, this development plan is precedent-setting. I am not sure what the precedent is. I noticed a similar proposal for Ireland. Any precedents are positive. It is mentioned that the subdivided lot will have 2,700-square-foot two-story house. As far as I'm aware, it will be approximately 1,120-square-foot footprint and a 1.5-story home built. As pointed out by others, the applicant has put in a great deal of effort and money to preserve this home. I see no downsides, only upsides. I walk the lane most days. If this project fails, there would be little to stop a developer from knocking 602 down and building a large square box home in its place. Is that what people prefer? Not only would this not fit with most people's appreciation of architecture, but nearby residents would be subject to construction, probably lasting several years. 602 would still have access to Linkley's. I turn my attention to another leaflet, hand-delivered to my door, titled, "Who Will Speak?" Well, I am speaking. This leaflet refers to the California quail, fawn lilies, and the owl. The California quail...
I'm just going to, my story just ran, your five minutes is done. Please wrap up your...
I've, I've got a couple of lines... I've got a couple of lines there.
Okay, thanks.
The California Quail is non-native and was introduced. The lilies, fawn lilies, are abundant on Anderson Hill and in Uplands Park. You cannot blame the applicant for the loss of, on Linklys, for these, as so far she has only put up two notice signs. I hope the Owls, as been pointed out, will benefit from the increased garry oaks. I hope the points I put forward will help council in their decision. Pat should be congratulated and praised. Well done, Pat.
Thank you, Mr. Atrey. Is there anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak? Please do.
Hello. My name's Lauren Charlton, and I am a thirty-nine-year resident of Oak Bay. I've lived on Island Road since eighty-six. I've submitted a letter that details the reasons for my support of this project, the HRA to Alala, building of value to be retained, and the subdivision of the property to allow a long-time resident to age in place. I note that one of the leaflets distributed stated the house will be a large house, twenty-seven-hundred square feet, and that trees would be removed, and that the road gave the impression the road would be widened for the full extent, and paved over, and the urban forest would be destroyed. The house, as the previous speaker had said, is going to be nineteen-hundred square feet, excluding the garage. We've heard that no trees will be removed, and the road is to be paved between the, in front of the current property and where the proposed house is, to make up the difference from the current three-point-five, four-point-two, give or take a couple of millimetres or whatever, to five metres, just for that period of time, so a period of the extent of the road. So it will only affect, at this point in time, that part of the road in front of the property in question. And I note that the property, south of the property that has the proposal forward, does have a pull-in in front of that property, in front of the hedgerow, which is set back. So there is already a property that has something that is probably about five, six feet pushed back. So the addition of the small area of paving would not be considerable. I've note that some of the letters that have been submitted earlier, and then on the amended letters, reference tree removal, street widening and paving, and the large houses, reasons that they're opposed to it, and this information is incorrect. I have stated in my letter that the subdivisions on Island Road previously, and on Linklys, have not destroyed the ambiance of the area, and I see walkers, and birders, and bikers, and cyclists still going up Island Road all the time, and Linklys. Oak Bay began, I see one of the other letters states that Oak Bay began with five tracts of land, and so we all live on subdivided land at this point in time, and I fully support the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak?
My name is Patrick Fry. I live on Oliver Street. I've lived on Oliver Street for, since nineteen eighty-two. I was, I had the good fortune to be the manager of policy for, at the time that the current heritage legislation was developed. And the HRA tool was one of the tools that we provided to local governments. The toolkit that we provided under legislation was fulsome, and would be allowing for the development of a project just like this. So I'm speaking in support of 602 Newport. This is exactly the type of development that we envisaged when we were developing the tool of the HRA. So I would just like to say that. I'm, it's very simple, and I'm just going to say that.
Mr. Fry, would you mind just writing down your name as well? I think we know how to spell it, but just in case. Is there anybody else who wishes to come down?
My name is Kelly Wright. I'm a resident of Oak Bay, and I just want to address the road widening aspect. We've already heard from Mr. Horan that the road will be widened in the area of the subdivision, and that he sees in the future that the rest of Linklys will be widened as well. There's no question, this is a slippery slope heading towards widening of a country lane that we do not want. Speaking for myself, obviously. What I say to mayor and council is please heed Oak Bay's official community plan, which focuses on the importance and the protection enhancement of the urban forest. Linklys is such an urban forest, and includes a garry oak meadow at the north, at the south end. The Oak Bay community, the official community plan outlines the many benefits a healthy urban forest offers, and states tree canopy decreases as urban density increases. Densification will have especially a significant effect on Linklys' urban forest. If you remember the public consultation related to the Oak Bay Heritage Plan asked respondents to identify Oak Bay's most significant heritage values, the number-one heritage value was established streetscapes and neighbourhoods, and this was cited by sixty-six percent of the surveyed respondents. The Vancouver Island Trail has its, has its southeast trailhead at Anderson Hill Park. Imagine a hiker making his way, or her way, to the southeast trailhead. They would likely take a bus. They would get off basically at Central and at Linklys, and take a walk up Linklys from Central Avenue. What better introduction to Oak Bay and the Vancouver Island Trail than having a healthy urban forest that they walk up? The Oak Bay Heritage Commission acknowledged 602 Newport had heritage value. However, the commission has, had also some serious concerns for Linklys' future as a country lane. What they stated was the rural view of Linklys could be impacted dramatically, and secondly, they said the impact of the single subdivision might encourage more subdivisions along Newport and Linklys corridors. People are saying, "This is just one development along Linklys?" True, it's one development that is, is going to encourage more people to subdivide. We know that there are people on the street, there are the green marks that, that Mr. Bigden held up, that are just waiting for this to go through so they can subdivide their lots, too. Honestly, I'd rather see a large house put on that single lot than divide the lot and put up two large houses. Please reject the proposal to prevent these impacts on Linklys. I recently spoke to Mr. Stuart Stark, one of two consultants who prepared the Oak Bay Heritage Plan. He told me, and I quote, "I personally think that Linklys Road is one of Oak Bay's treasures. It should be recognised as such and protected." Please ask yourselves, is this house at 602 Newport so important, you want to push other community values aside? This is what you're doing. Why are the mayor and council considering a jump from RS2 to RS5 in this proposal? This is a significant change in zoning, and it's smack dab in the middle of an RS2 neighbourhood. Please seize the opportunity to maintain a special urban forest in Oak Bay by rejecting the development proposal at 602 Newport. Thank you.
Thank you. Same routine.
My name is Pat Battles. I live on Linklys Avenue in Oak Bay, and I'm in the unique position of having the same name as the applicant for the HRA. And therefore, I have been implicated in some of the flashback for this project. I would like to register my support for the HRA development proposed for 602 Newport. I spoke at the council meeting when the committee of the whole met on July seventeenth, so my approval is on the public record. At that time, I spoke of the value that I see in ensuring that the visible architectural history of these homes in Oak Bay can be maintained. As it happens, because I live on Linklys Avenue, this gives me two reasons to be interested in this discussion. I am the Oak Bay Block Watch captain for Linklys Avenue, so I know the street very well. I'm a dog owner and routinely walk my dog up that section of Linklys. I certainly sympathise with the concern to maintain the lane-like aspect of what is usually known as Upper Linklys. However, I find it very hard to believe that the development proposed by Pat will lead to the dire consequences predicted by some of those opposed to this proposal. Repair and replacement, as mentioned tonight, of sewage and storm drains are necessary, given the aging infrastructure in Oak Bay. I am sure that Oak Bay will consider the importance placed by the public on the rural feel of Upper Linklys when this work is done, in conjunction with this development or otherwise. Having read on the Oak Bay Council website all the documentation, including with this proposal, and from speaking with Pat, I understand that the process of completing the application was very rigorous, to say the least. With that in mind, I think that the recommendation of the Heritage Committee should not be ignored without a lot more hard evidence of potential harm. As a resident of Linklys myself, I am very upset with the behaviour of the Friends of Linklys during this process. Personally, I think it borders very close to harassment. Circulation of anonymous documents with misinformation is not a useful way to deal with a project like this. Regardless of the outcome of this meeting, and I don't think this is possible, but I'm going to say it anyway, I would like to see council address the distribution of misinformation to try to rally support for a particular point of view, so that future applicants are not subjected to this very upsetting ordeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Battles. Is there any, the other Ms. Battles? Is there anybody else who wants to come forward to speak?
I'd like to speak at the end, if I could.
You'd be welcome back. Yes.
Hello. My name is Anita Wolf. I'm a resident of Chickewatch, which is also known as McNeil Bay, and Beach Drive and Transit. Usually, I'm coming here for shoreline, but I'll talk about ecosystems as well. I don't know what is involved exactly in the restoration of the ecosystem, should you go ahead with this development, but we are losing, we are losing in Oak Bay. When I was a member of the Environmental Advisory Committee, the priority was, how are we getting away? Can we get away from taking something down and putting up something new? And therefore, the recommendation of the Heritage Committee is really, really important. However, I think built environment can be rebuilt, redesigned. It's much, much harder to get an ecosystem that really reflects the values of, and the great, the great parts of Oak Bay. So I think this is an example where there's a contiguous corridor of habitat for birds, and owls, and eagles, and also for people. But that continuity, I don't see that happening in this development, and that's where the problem is, one of the problems, as well as, you know, I don't, I just don't know, I envy your positions. You have, you always come up, people are asking you to do tough things, and make tough decisions on behalf of the whole community. My recommendation is look at your OCP. Look at what's in there. Look at the research that was done when we conducted the OCP. It tells you what people want. The first thing is the beaches. The second thing are the trees and urban forests, and then the third thing is heritage. So you have to figure out where the priority is. And the other thing I'm going to recommend, to help possibly make your job easier, is that there be some kind of planning and design advisory committee that really is integrated with the planning. We've had environmental advisory committees, we have heritage committees, we have different, we have had different committees. There should be one that really works with the planning and planners. You don't have a sustainability person on staff. You have, many of your residents are, "We want to help you." So my recommendation is, you, like, you guys are fighting house by house, lot by lot. This is, I was a forester. We fought the War of the Woods over and over and over again in every single watershed. So let's elevate the conversation, see what you can do for getting something that looks at, you know, this a bit more holistically, so you don't have to have roomfuls of people coming in and us being the watchdogs all the time. Anyway, I don't know what the right answer is. Probably an ecologist would be able to tell. And I, I know the last time I came to speak, it was at, I can't remember the exact address, it was three hundred block King George Terrace? No, yes, three hundred block. And there was a violation that took something right down to the shoreline. Another packed, full room for that. Yes, there was restoration, and I walked that beach a lot. Yes, it is, it is good, and it could, it does approve, it is green shore certified. The problem is that there is, we've lost the contiguous corridor. And so we just, you know, you just can't look at it like one little box at a time. Look at the whole thing. And I'll register my support for a planning or some kind of advisory committee, and you can call on me. And I have half a dozen people on speed dial. It'll help you, too. Okay, well, good luck with the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf.
My name is Oak Bay, and my name is Bob Lewy, 585 Linklys. I am a professional forester and a soil scientist, now retired. I was the former head of the Provincial Soil Conservation Unit, which provided technical information for the establishment of the ALR, the Agricultural Land Reserve. Also, I also provided technical information to the municipalities of North Sanwich and Highlands for their long, for their long-term planning purposes. Your worship, two weeks ago, I attended council meeting to introduce a plan for the conservation of forested laneways such as Linklys. At that time, I had three minutes to present that plan, but the buzzer went and I failed. So tonight, I am back. So Canada has vast wilderness areas, mostly in areas far from where we live. On the other hand, wilderness close to home, at our very doorsteps, are under increasing development pressure. These pockets of green spaces are slowly disappearing, slowly eroding before our very eyes. One of these pockets is Linklys Lane. People know what a treasure we have. Yet, over the recent years, its values has diminished. A subdivision here, variance planned there, a lane gradually widened. This problem has been growing all across Canada, not just here. But what to do? Finally, last year, the federal government, our federal government in Ottawa, recognised the seriousness of this, of this issue, and has allocated $1.3 billion towards the conservation of urban wilderness areas, such as Linklys lanes. I repeat, $1.3 billion. So here in South Oak Bay, we already have such a wilderness at our very doorstep, Anderson Hill Park, the laneways of Linklys, island and transit. It's here in the private gardens of large and small subdivisions all around-- It's here in the private gardens of large and small subdivisions all around Anderson Hill. It's here on the foreshores of Beach Drive. We need to document what we have and make recommendations on how to improve it, and to protect it for future generations. The concept of the, this conservation plan is in an article published just a few days ago, was in the Globe and Mail. I would like to take this opportunity to read three short quotes. Number one, conservation needs to start at our doorstep, saving pockets of green space preserve endangered habitats. Number two, every property owner, even city dwellers with postage stamp-sized lots, should set aside a fraction of their land for conservation. And number three, a decision based on land use subdivision is not looking at the big It's important to protect natural landscape. That is the message from Ottawa, and I trust that you people will take it, take it in. So if we, if we conduct such a plan, I think it will take some time to do it. It will take money, but the money is there. Do we have the will? I don't know whether we do. You tell me. We do have an opportunity to bring back the quails. We do have an opportunity to bring back the fawn lilies. We can ensure that owl will have a home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Louis.
My name is Missy Albano. I've been a visitor to the land of the Lagavanken people for the last thirty years. I live on Linkley's. This year alone, there were five large trees cut on Linkley's. I took a year off to meditate. When I came back from my first retreat, my neighbor's house was going down. When that house finished building, the house in front of me went down. And a year later, the house perpendicular to me is going down, out on Linkley's Avenue. I'm speaking from the heart. I really want to protect the land. I want to become an ally of Indigenous people who were here before, and I'm against the development.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Nicola Atrey. I live on Bing Street. You heard my husband, the biologist, talking a little earlier. I just would like to say that I'm in total support of Pat Battles. I think she's done a superb job in conjunction with her architect of trying to preserve the locale, the environment, and also promote heritage homes, which I'm a big fan of. I mean, no doubt that if this doesn't go through, what will happen? A developer will buy that property, will knock that house down, will build a big monster house, as is happening in two places on Newport already. There is a house at the top of that hill on the other side, just before you go down to the golf course. I believe it's going to be eight thousand square feet. They're going to be blasting, they're going to be building an underground garage. I, I really personally don't like that, and I can see that happening where Pat lives. So I would much prefer her proposal to go through than the alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Atrey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is going to be a long night. I'm Barry Anderson. I live on Central Avenue. Gee, we've been there for thirty-five years. Time passes. I was pretty impressed with the proposal as we heard it tonight, but there's no way that by putting more concrete and more construction on the lot, the ambience of the neighborhood will not be altered. And I, I think that the fear we've heard expressed here several times of slow incremental changing and paving over of the community is a process that's going on. It's part of the game that I guess council's elected to try to resolve. I do have a suggestion, though. The Heritage Committee is looking at a building. It has a bunch of legal remedies to protect the building, allowing a council to override its bylaws and so on, but nobody is looking after the streetscape, the environment, all of these other things. That's a bigger planning issue, and council has got an advisory planning commission. I don't think it's met for a year, maybe more. I personally, I personally would like to see this proposal referred to that commission, and I'd like to see it go through a regular planning process. We found out about this thing three or four days ago. We had the weekend to construct a letter and send something to council. It's not a good way for the community to consider something, and it begets meetings like this. So I think the heritage process is a good one. It's not structured enough, and it's not broad enough to deal with community concerns, and it has no feedback to the community plan. If this is the way that we think the community should develop, it should be built into the community plan such that we don't have to have a variance on the community plan every time something like this comes up. And it's coming up a lot, as people have noted. So my thought for council, anyway. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward? Yeah, well, I'll just take first-time speakers first, and then we'll come back to second-time speakers. Anybody else wish to come forward? There we go.
Dawn Wright, resident of Oak Bay. I'm not wishing to be in front of council, to be recorded. I feel very uncomfortable and had hoped I wouldn't find the need to stand here in front of you. However, I will start with, and forgive my nervousness, please. I respectfully agree to disagree with many people here. Anyone who says no one is affected cannot speak for everyone. This affects the Oak Bay community. It affects Victoria, and it affects the visitors that come here. People walk, bike, bring their children, their grandchildren up Linkley's Island, Bing, as far as they can go and turn around, many streets of Oak Bay. It's a treasure, and it's being lost. There is no need for this. I understand there's, the council and mayor are attempting to have density and meet the needs of everyone, and it is not possible, absolutely not possible, to meet, to meet every single need. There will be disappointment on one side or the other, but I disagree with changing the landscape of Linkley's. I would love to protect Island Road from any further destruction. It was beautiful. Fifteen years ago, Island, Bing, and Linkley's was the desirable, desirable neighborhood. I sought to move into it, and I sought for six years to move into that neighborhood as it stood as an urban forest, and it is being destroyed. I beg of you to consider the urban forest for our generation and future generations. I understand paving may have to happen to a certain extent. I understand that, that water mains or sewers, forgive me if I'm not quoting that exactly, will need to be replaced in future. They do deteriorate. But I don't know that, that you have to pave over it after that infrastructure is replaced. Again, I can only say I respectfully agree to disagree with anyone who wishes to change that street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
I will write on the back of.
Sure. Need longer pieces of paper, apparently. Anybody else wish to come forward to speak for the first time? Anybody else seeing, I'll take the second thing, and I'll, I'll invite you up after the speaker, if that's okay. You wish to come up for a second time? You don't have to write your name this time, just state it again for the record.
Mayor Murdock and Council, thank you again. Just two quick things. From listening to all this tonight and doing all the reading on the web and thinking about it, it seems to me this is a great proposal, it's just in the wrong place, okay? I feel strongly, like many of the others, that we need to protect Linkley's. It's what Island Road used to look like. The other's point was that a lot of people have spoken with regard to the pamphlet that was delivered, and I received both of them on Island Road, and I can't speak to the accuracy, but I was really glad to get it because I hadn't really, I didn't know about the project. I walked down Linkley's, and there's the big green and white sign, and it never had a date until just very recently, and all of a sudden, it's a hearing. So I would hope in the future, when you put up those signs, that you can give the dates TBA, when the first meeting's going to be held, okay? So I appreciated the pamphlets. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody wish to come up and speak for a second time? That would include Mr. Key, if you wish to come forward again.
It's been a very interesting conversation. To me, as an architect, I've been in Victoria all my working life, and this wouldn't be my first rodeo as far as controversy. I think there's a couple of things I want to say to begin, I guess, in a sense of a This is not in conflict with the official community plan. I said that earlier. There is several goals of the community plan, at least six of them, and this project of preservation, infill, sensitive, increase in density in the, in the neighborhood is absolutely what I think the OCP is trying to say, and I think this is an appropriate development. Our instructions from our client, Pat Battles, were clear that the sensitivity to the environment and to her neighbor were going to drive this project and direct it. A second comment was around timing. As I mentioned before, there was a neighborhood meeting. Pat tried to notify everybody. There was twenty or twenty-five people there. I think the jungle telegraph works just fine with projects like this. The sign, although it didn't have a date, has been up for months, and it would have been readily available to City Hall to find out a date. I think Linkley's is an interesting situation. We had a camera as a requirement by this district. The sewer has basically collapsed. So I, I think with respect, I don't think it's going to be fifty years before the street is dug up and some major renewal takes place, and that has nothing to do with this project. That has to do with the age of the services. I assume it's clay tile, and it's worn out. I think also dealing with Linkley's, we had, as part of the discussion around the house and around heritage with the Heritage Commission, an extensive discussion around Linkley's with, with the committee, commission, and we've also had extensive discussions with staff. And I think people that reside in Oak Bay should give their staff some credit for carefully evaluating this proposal, coming back with ideas that they felt would be acceptable in terms of the boulevard, in terms of native plants, in terms of restoring that area. I've also heard about the urban forest. Pat Battles' backyard right now is a garage and a bunch of grass with one tree which is protected. I think the landscape design that has been produced is a far more complex urban forest environment. If an owl's going to sit around, it's going to be over in those Gary Oak trees, which are not there now. So I think we've done what we can, and I think this comes back to what I've always tried to do as an architect, which is make an environment, a setting for a building, primarily my work has been residential, which is more complex, not less. It's to try and integrate a new building into the community to preserve heritage where it's appropriate. A lot of my work has been heritage-related. I think, you know, I'm very comfortable with what we've put together here, and I have to give Pat a lot of credit for directing us, me and my, my staff that are there, in how to approach this problem.
Thank you, Mr. Key. And I will, this is still the second, people want to come up for a second time, this is the chance for them to do so. If you wish to come forward a second time, you're welcome to do so. No hands required.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a short statement. In Oak Bay, how many heritage homes are there? Of that number, how many have been designated heritage? In Oak Bay, how many forested laneways are there? Of that number, how many of those have been saved to date? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Louis. Anybody else wish to come and speak a second time?
I wanted to address that the pamphlet sent out has misinformation. The, the square footage of.
Could you just speak your name again for the record?
Oh, sorry, Kelly Wright, Oak Bay. The square footage on the flyer is from the K Architecture Limited's data table. There are a lot of exemptions that are not, are not included in the square footage. Those exemptions are for tax purposes and racial purposes. They have nothing to do with the fact that the house will be two thousand six hundred and ninety-two square feet. The house also is five, over five and a half feet wider than the existing home on Newport, and it is proposed to be just four and one-third inches shorter than the existing home when average grade roof height is taken into consideration. This is not a small house. I'm, the biologist came up and said that the, the area of improvement of this proposed new house on the subdivision will increase rain drainage, but we already know that the paving of Linkley's will continue, and that's going to far out, the lack of absorption of rainwater is going to be significant if, if Linkley's is paved. Also, if Mayor and Council look at the safety of a single roadway compared to a road that can accommodate two cars going either way, study after study shows that a single lane is safer. So again, it was commented that a two-lane road will be safer. It's completely the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you. We apparently have, the signup sheet has been picked up, and somebody's picking up their papers. If somebody just checked their papers when they came up, if they have it, we just need to have that back up here again. Oh, you got it there? Okay, thank you.
I've got one of them. There must be another one. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you so much. Ms. Wolf up for a second time?
Yes, Anita Wolf, just for that point on safety, I'm a bit delayed today because I was on Oliver Street, riding my bike getting here. My voice is a bit shaky because I got hit by a car on the way over. So I'm nursing some pretty serious wounds under these pants, but I think just to that point about safety, I don't think we have a wider street than Oliver. You've got too big. You've got parking on both sides, you've got enough room to pass by, and I still, somebody opened up a door right in front of me. So anyway, just to that point, those laneways have so much value, so many values, you know, for humans, for four-leggeds, for two-leggeds, and if, to Mr. Louis's point, how many of these kind of lanes have we saved? And that comment, Linkley's looks like what Island used to look like. So like, when we lose it, we just lose it forever. And I'm hoping that you consider impervious, semi-pervious services for wherever you can for any of the roadways going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Make a last call here for anybody else to come forward on this, for the second time, second round of ask. Seeing anybody else, so this is the, I'm going to call for the third and final time for anybody who wishes to come forward. I'm just going to remind everybody that the public hearing, this is the final opportunity to provide council with your comments prior to the potential consideration of this proposed bylaw. So is any additional written commissions to be included in the public record of the hearing? hearing? If you could just provide that submission to the corporate officer now, prior to the close of the public hearing, and this is the third and final call for public input.
Counsel. Good evening. It's been a fascinating evening listening, and my name's Christopher Carston. I recognize many people in the audience, and I recognize them not only from being neighbors, but I also recognize them from the fact that council has dealt with these issues before. Let me give you a little bit of history to try and help, because I am not here to tell you how to vote. That is not appropriate for a former mayor. What I think I can do is to help guide you by asking you to look at some of the things that have happened in the past, and try to formulate your thinking around those things to come up with a solution that is in the best interest of everyone in the community. So I live on Transit Road, actually I live on, I've lived on Transit Road for thirty-three, thirty-three years. I can actually remember when I moved into Transit Road, in the first month, there was a cougar, there, sorry, there was, there was a cougar warning up on Linkleus. And in fact, there was a cougar warning up there about three years in a row, so we can see how things have changed. In this room, there was someone earlier who made an application three times on a subdivision. The address, the address was 646, sorry, 640, 648, Linkleus Road. And I can remember same arguments, and it was, I thought, as mayor, I thought it was relatively easy to make that decision, because there was a line where RS4 went to RS2, and there was a question of whether that line had been drawn in the first place. After the third hearing, that was approved and has worked well. I'll refer you to another application, which was five, okay, so five, no, 572 Linkleus and 588 Linkleus, which is a very large house, which is thirty-five feet back from the lane, and I would challenge anyone to look at that and say that that building hasn't been there for a long time, because the applicant, without mentioning names, made a pledge that you wouldn't notice any difference in the lane when it was finished. That's true. I guarantee now that you look at it and you say, whoa, that vegetation couldn't have been stripped all the way and put back, but it can. So I think that's one of your challenges. Secondly, I would ask you to look at the zoning, because this is where you're going to run into some problems, because you are right mid-block of an RS2. And one of the things you have to look at in Oak Bay is where, way before me, way before all you guys, there was RS2 zoning, and what were the values of the community that they put, they put into that? We've always had problems with this recording system. What was the, what was the issues that Oak Bay dealt with when they put those RS2 zonings? And you'll notice, there are very few RS2 zonings. So you've got a couple of issues here, not insurmountable, but what you have to do is come up with a policy of how you're going to deal with heritage revitalization agreements, which I think are fantastic, but at the same time, protecting, because this is not a house on a alley or a lane between Hampshire and Monterey on the back lane there. This is a country lane that is all part of the Anderson Hill, Linkleus, Island Road, and Transit. You're going to get these applications on Transit as well. So what you're dealing with tonight requires you to think about the policy and what you're going to do, and how you're going to deal with it. That's all I wanted to say, and I wish you luck. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carston. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak to council? Third and final time? Not seeing anybody else, so thank you very much. We are now moving for the close of the public hearing. I believe we need to have a...
Move adjournment? Second?
Oh, actually, before we have the adjournment, I think I just need to have a couple of closing remarks. The public hearing is now closed officially for our, for public input. Now that it's closed, we can't take any more submissions or comments from the public on, so any interested persons can't contact us with more information. Please be advised that should council need clarification or staff opinion on issues raised at this public hearing, or the information associated with the public hearing, council can request such clarification from staff after the close of the public hearing at the following regular meeting of council, when third reading of the proposed bylaw is being considered. And that looks like that will be next week, if all is going to plan. It should also be noted that as per the Local Government Act after a public hearing, council may without further notice or hearing adopt or defeat the proposed bylaw or alter, and then adopt the bylaw so long as it does not affect the user density. I'm sure that's just a requirement statement on there. Thank you very much. Yeah, there we go. We're not going to have, do any other changes with another public hearing, so it's just a formality. With that, we need a motion, we have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Seconded.
The second.
All those in favor? Opposed, not opposed, thank you very much. I'm going to just take five minutes, and we'll reconvene at 8:20 for our scheduled council meeting. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming out for this. A lot more positive and respectful than I was expecting. People are really good. They're really good. Couple of, you always get a couple of people who say things that are entirely short, they're in favor. Exposing a value. Yeah, well, now we've just got six hours of council and two hours of in camera, and we'll be done. Yep, get some muffins. All right, if I could just ask everybody to take their seats, we'll start in about Good evening, everybody, and thank you for your patience. If you were expecting a seven o'clock start time for this meeting, here we are at 8:23 to call this meeting to order. We do start this meeting as we do all our meetings, just acknowledging that we are holding this meeting on the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait Salish peoples, specifically Lakongan-speaking people, knowing today as the song "He's in a Squamaw" First Nations, and we respect the fact that their connections to these lands continue to this day. I also want to point out that these meetings are video livestreamed and recorded for archive purposes, so if you do come to the microphone and speak on anything, those will be included in the video broadcast. I need to have a motion just to amend the agenda slightly. Obviously, with the deferral of 602 Newport, we're just, the agenda will remove items 11, 12, and 13, which are the items related to 602 Newport, and I would like to move the item number 13 reconsideration, motion of 2506, 2512 Wooten, to the point immediately following the minutes and proceeding the public input portion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, not opposed? Turning myself off, that's never a good sign. Sorry, I'm just going to, we, because all of this moving around and changing, I'm just going to make sure I'm in the right point in my notes to get things correct. So, for those of you who don't know, we're now on item 13, which is the reconsideration motion, and this just, it's a prerogative of a mayor to bring back, sorry, it's item 14 on the, on the agenda, of a mayor to bring back a, an item that was previously debated and voted on for reconsideration. And so that's what this item is. This is related to the duplex on Wooten. It has been the tradition of this body to have all members present for significant land use decisions, and so we're having this one back to our, to this discussion, so that Counselor Braithwaite can be here as part of the, part of the debate, and it essentially just reopens the debate at the point that we left it off last time, for those who are curious about where we're at in this process. And I just want to confirm with Counselor Braithwaite, Counselor Braithwaite, did you have a chance to read the minutes of the public hearing prior to this?
I read the minutes and watched the video twice.
Oh, there you go.
I was a keener.
Thank you for that. So that reopens the discussion here. We have had some, excuse me, some debate on this, on this issue already, so Counselor Braithwaite, I would just perhaps bring it to you if you have anything you wish to add to the debate? And actually, before, actually, before you do that, I'm just going to turn to staff. Is there any sort of protocol here, is, should I, should I bring, I'm not bringing this back because I disagree with the decision, I'm bringing it back so that there's a chance for all councillors to be heard and have a vote on this item. So is there anything that I should be covering off at this point in this process? My first ever reconsideration, and hopefully the last I ever have to do.
So, Your Worship, as you've provided rationale, and if no new information has been received, you should just treat the item like first and second has been given to the bylaw, which it has, and now you can enter into debate, and then the vote is called.
Okay, thank you. And I just, I know there were some question raised in terms of what that means about no new information being risen, so I just want to make sure I'm clear that we've had a public hearing on this, and so this is now, and the reconsideration is, have we had a clarification in terms of what are, whether we should go back to public hearing or just have this meeting as it is? My understanding is we're okay just bringing the debate back following the public hearing.
Thank you, Your Worship. So if no new correspondence or a delegation has been received by the body of council, then that is what triggers, is it new information or not new information? Does that answer your question?
It does. Okay. No new information specifically related to this application? Okay, thank you. Counselor Braithwaite?
Do you want me to state my opinion now, or is that...
I guess I should, before I do that, is there, I guess I should ask the question, has the body of council received new information that we have here that would, that would trigger a new public hearing? That's another question. Counselors, all come?
Thank you, Chair. I have done research on my own in terms of trying to flesh out some of the information I received from staff, and looking up NAMO bylaws. I did share my research with council, so you have a flavor for what I was able to find. I also did some research as to the efficacy, the legality of moving forward with a reconsideration motion, and I tend to concur with staff that it is a reasonable thing to proceed. I do apologize. A question related, though, to procedure, if I may, I thought we were doing this after the public hearing, after we received the minutes. You wanted to do this as the first item before the minutes? I wasn't sure on the order.
Oh, you're, good point. I asked this for, you're right, I'm doing a very poor job of chairing this. Now that I've called a reconsideration on this, where am I at here procedure-wise? Do it now? Okay, we'll just continue with this, and we'll do the minutes afterwards. Thank you for catching me out on that, though, I appreciate that. Sorry. I'm just so excited about this piece of the thing. All right, it's been a long night already, apparently.
original public hearing and to be, to be around the table to make the decision. As I've mentioned, I have read the minutes and watched the video twice, and so here's my, some of my thoughts around this. And that would be that the OCP established neighborhoods' land use designation does speak, I believe, to diversifying housing options while retaining qualities that make neighborhoods attractive. I do believe that the proposal would allow for an improvement to the existing building without substantially affecting the neighborhood. So you have to really keep in mind that this duplex has been here in this location since before even I was born, so like thirty years. Okay, maybe forty or fifty, whatever. But I would agree with the staff report that says the proposal contributes to and satisfies several OCP housing objectives and policies by retraining a form that contributes to diverse housing options without disrupting existing trees, parking, traffic, or other neighborhood characteristics. So I'm happy to be able to now sit around this table, and I will be voting in favor for this, this reconsideration.
Thank you, councillor Braithwaite, but I, before we get to two strong statements on support, there was a couple of concerns raised last time, and I just would like to give the opportunity, since you're here now, to, for anybody who has concerns about this, to be personally raised them, if there's any, again, questions or clarifications of staff at this time, happy to take those as well. Okay, councillor Green?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to clarify, because I understand at the time that I wasn't perhaps as clear as I could have been about my concerns about the proposal. And so I just want to reiterate those, and I will state them as follows. The compelling new information and correspondence from the adjacent neighbor about the impacts on them of this project, a submission from an Oak Bay resident about potential legal or policy implications of this particular rezoning going ahead, comments from colleagues who had similar concerns, comments by the applicants to local media, and a consideration that included the fact that council has not yet completed its housing needs study and housing plan. And while I do agree in principle with duplexes, I would like to see all of the non-conforming duplexes have their zoning changed in the future. So I would like to see them treated as a collective body rather than as a case by case. So those are my reasons, and that's why I did not support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Green. Anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. A question through you to staff, if I may take this opportunity. I would love to understand a bit more of some of the information I received at, at the last meeting, although the Director of Building and Planning isn't here, I'm sure, I'm sure Ms. Jensen will be able to, to fill his shoes, or whomever is appropriate. I did want to ask in particular, why have so many other districts throughout British Columbia put in their zoning bylaws, put in their various bylaws, such controls over duplexes with respect to strata? Why is strata of a duplex, I don't know, I don't want, I don't know whether it's fearful or whether there's something else going on, but there appears to be something going on with respect to the stratification of these multifamily properties that from, from first blush seems to have a severe impact on the rental stock available in the district? So I would like to have the opinion, the information from our staff to, to help understand why so many controls seem to be put in with specifically to strata on the, on the duplexing aspect, please.
Okay. We, why is always a bit of a tricky one for staff to answer since their council bylaws approved, but I will, Ms., I'm looking back and for Ms. Vrella, it's late when I'll give it to her.
Thank you, your worship. So different local governments will take different approaches. It was interesting, at the most recent planning conference, they were talking about trends about housing forms and stratification and things like that. So I'm leery to make general statements about past trends and current trends in this context, but we certainly could bring back information in a general context as part of the housing discussion moving forward. But again, looking at different zoning bylaws in different local governments is very different, and it's very difficult, and, and you certainly, to speak to rationales is also unfair, because each of those community plans are going to be different as well. So again, it's a unique made-in-Oak Bay situation that you want to focus on, not the trends across the province in this context respectfully.
Thank you, Ms. Vrella.
If I may?
Yes?
Thank you very much. So continuing with the general questioning. So I understand the concern around generalizations. I did ask specifically in the last meeting about Nenaimo, because in Nenaimo, and hopefully we have some experience of people who maybe even worked in Nenaimo at one point, who may be able to help understand why Nenaimo has a very extensive and well-written, I must say, policy on strata conversion policies and guidelines that maybe we could learn from as a single example. I do notice that also within the zoning bylaws of Nenaimo, for certain of their actual zoning zones, they have specific restrictions on subdivisions or otherwise stratotitled, where they, they do not allow in certain some of their zones any kind of stratification of a dual or multi-lot type subdivisions. So I was wanting to get maybe from a single specific, whether that possibly could be some, some learnings with respect to Nenaimo that we could learn from Oak Bay. Oak Bay, of course, is very small. We have only so much staff, only so much resources, and one of the things I think that has helped to keep us so pristine, so wonderful, so, such paradise, is that we have been able to learn from the mistakes of others. So not wanting to generalize, so let's get specific. Why does Nenaimo have such strong controls on the stratification aspects of duplexes in particular, please?
I might again take that away from the why, because it's just difficult, but I will ask the, allow the question to you. Is it Ms. Jensen's best to answer this one? There are some zones in Nenaimo which have this restriction, so perhaps you could address where those fit.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. You're testing my memory. Oh, going back to writing those documents. So there's actually a couple of different provisions in Nenaimo documents that speak to strata conversion. The first of those actually goes back to the official community plan, which was adopted before the new zoning bylaw. And as part of that document, there are policies in there that speak more to the vacancy threshold of strata conversion for multifamily buildings. And even that, that doesn't necessarily take it down all the way to a duplex unit, but rather, I believe, I believe the last percentage rate was three percent. Don't hold me to that, but I think it was three percent, looking at the vacancy rate in terms of council considering a strata conversion. With respect to the zoning bylaw, there is a clause in the zoning bylaw for the AR zones, which is more the rural agricultural areas. For those pieces, it serves kind of a multipurpose. A lot of those areas are subject to the agricultural land reserve, which would have to go through a process anyway to allow for subdivision. The other piece of it is that something in Nenaimo called the urban reserve, where they were looking more for a broader plan for the very residential areas and before allowing any further conversion to happen in those areas. Again, the clause that's in the zoning bylaw, I'm going to refer to it more as a flag. It actually would not hold up in terms of a zoning regulation. So if, in fact, an applicant came in, in one of those zones, to the approving officer, to council, it would still have to be considered that, that regulation, then zoning bylaw would not be enough.
Anything else?
Yes, if I could get even more specific and ask in a general sense. Sorry, in a more specific sense, and, and I'll have to be delicate with this question, because I was hoping to ask the Director of Building and Planning and not the person so designated as the approving officer. Because it's a question about how the approving officer may make decisions, so this, I'm not, maybe you could help me with the wording, if I word it indelicately. So the question that I would have to ask then is with respect to the one duplex that we had moved forward here in Oak Bay, that I think was designated in twenty, in twenty-fourteen, and then in twenty-seventeen, it went through a process where it was stratified, I understand, and it did not come to council, and yet, I understood it was occupied. I'm not sure whether it was rented or not, but it was occupied. So the question I wanted to ask, as in the context of Oak Bay, what considerations would the approving officer take with respect to the stratification of a duplex going forward? And I need to know this to help me understand how to vote on this question. Thank you.
I guess a fair question. I might reframe that slightly and maybe see if I get this right, because I'm curious about this as well. I'm not a hundred percent clear where the approving officer would approve a strata or have the responsibility for that versus when it would come to council. So is it a strata conversion, what, a rental conversion? Where does that, in our, in our processes, where does that trigger come, to council versus to staff?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. In its simplest, if you are building a new multifamily building, whether that is a duplex or ten units, if you have the correct zoning in place, which presumably you do since you were building it, that goes through the land title authority. It has nothing to do with the approving officer. It has nothing to do with council. If you have an existing building, such as one that was constructed in nineteen thirty, nineteen fifty, two thousand, if they are looking for a strata conversion of those existing units in Oak Bay, that would come to this council for consideration. They would be the approving authority. They would consider those applications in respect of the Strata Property Act. There are some very specific references that are listed in there that would have to be considered by council.
So if any existing duplex that's a rental unit gets converted to strata or wants to be converted to strata, it would come to council? Is that, is that the current process?
Essentially, yes. Yeah, in, for either of those situations, the designated approving officer plays no role in that other than to bring the report forward to council.
Thank you. Does that clarify?
It does, but I do have.
One more question. Go ahead.
One more question.
Just one little question.
Just one more little question, if I may, please, through you to staff. How could a patient landowner who currently has a duplex with rentals convert it to an empty duplex that doesn't have rentals? So that possibly they could move forward and then do the, do the stratification without the input of council? The reason I ask this is that at one point in the legislation, it's specific, I think, I think the number was eighteen months. The property had to be vacant for eighteen months, and at that point, it's no longer a rental. It's essentially treated like an empty building. But I couldn't find that eighteen months anymore, so I don't know what the current guideline is in terms of how long you need to keep a building vacant to lose the rental aspect, and it's now no longer something that has to come to council. So I just wanted to, to know if, or what that might be, and how the approving officer in Oak Bay might handle a situation like that. Please.
I'll turn it to Ms. Jensen. I'm, this is a question of whether that can be done probably first, and if so, what would be the, are there, are there protections in place to prevent that from happening?
I'm not sure if I'm going to specifically hit what councillor Zelka's question is. There is, to the effect of a strata conversion, I'm not aware of any legislation around that. There is a clause for non-conforming units, where you lose your non-conforming status after a six-months use, but that's specific to a use. It may not apply to a building where you already have two units existing.
But I guess for clarification, should anybody at any point take an existing duplex and want to make major changes to it or to turn it into a stratification, even if it's sat empty for some time, it's zoned as a single-family zone currently, non-conforming duplex? So it would trigger that, the stratification process to come to council? Is that correct?
I would expect so, but again, you'd have to look at the individual case.
Okay, thank you.
The last point, if I may?
Yes.
The reason I bring this point up is that, you know, today in Oak Bay, we have approximately three hundred empty houses that are being maintained and being left empty approximately, by, by, by the best estimates that, that we can come by. So it's not, while it seems crazy, it just seems to be true. Other districts, other cities have even higher numbers, and I don't quite understand why they're doing that, but they are. So I just wanted to, to make sure that, that this council, this, this body always had some measure of control over what we'd like to see moving forward with respect to protecting, in particular, protecting our rental stock. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just, should just ask your opinions. Oh, councillor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. And just as a follow-up to this, this was one of my concerns in considering the application. As has been stated at other meetings, we, Oak Bay does have one other new duplex, the first in many years. And I think that all of the members of council and certainly most of the community thought that that was a positive step forward for the community. But since development and since strata was used on the unit, the unit has sat vacant. And so the well-intentioned desire to bring diversity to the community actually didn't result in, in those positive benefits that we saw. And I certainly am hopeful that as we move forward in developing a housing plan, that we will perhaps look at what other communities are, are doing, so that as we consider these changes in the community moving forward, that we actually can achieve positive benefits to the community. Because to have the, the one duplex in many years developed and having it sitting vacant was not the purpose that was intended. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that one half of it's lived in. Apparently, the second half is not. Again, I take it back to this specific application. If there's, are there concerns raised on this application that, that the, the approval of changes to this or legalizing this duplex would, would result in that being more vacant? Is that the, is that the concern still existing after the answers from council or from staff?
Are you asking a question?
I'm just curious.
Well, for, for me, the, the, one of the concerns that I have is that right now, there, there, if I remember correctly, there were, there were three families living in that building. And at, at the very least, we're going to be losing one of them as a result of this, this, this duplex going forward, and that concerns me. So at the appropriate time, I'd like to move an amendment to the motion being brought forward. I, I don't know whether it's still in discussion or whether we're moving into something.
We're sitting at third reading right now. I'm not sure. We have to be very careful about amending third reading just because there's a, there's a process attached to the bylaw. So I think it depends a little bit on what the amendment is in terms of what that process would be. You can make an amendment anytime.
Then I'll make the amendment now, if I may. And, and if this results in, in a change that requires a, a public hearing again, well, so be it. But I think this, this change is something that, that, that I hopefully, well, let's, let's, let's see what you think. Whereas the essence of this bylaw, three five three one point one oh four, is simply to rezone the named property to RD one in order to remove the legal non-conforming status of the duplex and to allow a second-story addition. That's its only purpose. And whereas the Strata Act came, that when the Strata Act came in, Oak Bay immediately removed duplex zoning to control the wholesale removal of rentals as had occurred elsewhere. And whereas Oak Bay, maybe due to its small size, or maybe the fact that we are such awake, aware, and nimble councillors that we have, we learn well from the mistakes of others that have helped to create this paradise that we have here. And whereas in twenty-fourteen, in the last meeting of an outgoing council, bylaw, the bylaw bringing in RD one duplex zoning was rushed back into existence, but without clear strata protection for rentals. And whereas protection of the rental stock is of utmost importance, and I think even more so in recent times. And whereas we can take the same approach here as we did for cannabis regulation, which is to do a blanket outlaw, which, a blanket outlaw, which in a non-intuitive way ensures that any proposal that could still come forward would be guaranteed to come to council for decision. And finally, whereas if we do not provide clear direction or policy for the approving officer, if this body does not do that, an owner of this or other duplexes achieving RD one's rezoning could, with enough patience, bypass council and have the approving officer act alone on a strata-titling subdivision as had occurred on the Estevan property in twenty-seventeen. Therefore, be it resolved to amend this rezoning bylaw, to add this wording to the zoning bylaw nineteen eighty-six, and that would be under section six point Therefore, be it resolved to amend this rezoning bylaw, to add this wording to the zoning bylaw 1986. And that would be under section 6.6 RD1 zone. Insert the line, section 6.6.1 subsection 3, and I'll be fine to email this to staff if as necessary. And under this new section 6613, strata plans are not allowed under this zoning category, the category of RD1. Or some such other wording as affected by staff to achieve the same.
I don't know that we can have that that. Well, let's see if there's a second or and I'll check for if there's a if there's interest from the.
I'll second it just to get the discussion on the table.
Okay, then I will go to staff and just ask the question. I think this would substantially change the application that we we couldn't consider this as part of this application process other than to go back.
Your worship, staff would require clarification. It I'm not sure, but it sounds like we're talking about a zoning bylaw amendment, blanket zoning bylaw amendment, which is a separate and aside from this particular decision making point for council. So staff would just need clarification, please.
Okay, fair enough. It does, in fact, sound like what this is. It adds a broader zoning change requirement.
So to to clarify, if I may, before, since it is been seconded, the essence is that this this motion on the floor that the amendment is attempting to change is the actual let's see if I can bring it up here. So we're making changes to the zoning bylaw as a result of this of this public hearing process and the third hearing, the third reading, which is to modify the zoning bylaw. So I just simply wanted to add an extra line on the modification to the zoning bylaw. I don't wish to undercut the intent of the process, which is to make the duplex legal. However, there's nothing in the process here that talks about allowing strata going forward. So I don't see how this actually changes the intent of the motion. The intent of the motion is fundamentally to make the duplex legal by rezoning it. I'd like to continue to do that, but at the same time, in the future, to make sure that there's no process going forward and that we continue to have the rentals of Oak Bay protected. This would actually provide direction to the approving officer, and it would ensure that if someone in the future did want to stratify a duplex, they would just simply have to come back to council. It wouldn't stop it.
I I believe that I hear what you're saying. It is a change of the zoning bylaw, but I'm going to turn to staff here that this is really adding this property to RD1, not not changing the the whole course of the bylaw itself. So I will just I'll give staff a chance to consider this as part of the piece.
And if I may, I've emailed it to to our CAO and our Director of Corporate Services.
Thank you, your worship. So the motion that's on the floor is that the bylaw be read a third time. So again, to me, this seems like a separate and aside motion. However, if council should choose to direct staff to do further research after this application is considered, it seems to me there's an 18 month window of concern that I'm not sure is actually applicable, given Oak Bay's bylaws. So again, to me, I'm still hearing them as two separate considerations.
I would tend to agree with that. I think this is this motion by its in and of its nature is changing the core of the of the bylaw more than the specifics of the third reading of this particular bylaw. I'm the motion's been made. I don't think I can. I'm just just a second. Have to decide if this is going to be if I can rule this out of order or if I let the question go to the council. Can I ask the there's some direction from staff here in terms of the I am concerned here that it does fundamentally change the nature of the of the motion on the floor, which is just third reading of the bylaw.
I believe, your worship, and I'll welcome any of those sitting at the table beside me to weigh in, but it seems you have two separate motions on the floor, both of which have been first and seconded.
We have a motion to amend on the floor.
First one's live, the second one is first and second. Thank you. Worded that wrong.
We do have a motion. I just have to decide whether it's I'm going to rule it in order or not. I.
Point of procedure, if I may?
Go ahead.
A point of information in particular. So a question with respect to public hearings. When the public has a chance to speak and they provide information and then we have we have can ask questions of staff and we can get clarifications, can we not make changes to the motion at any point in the process? I and I don't. And if we can't, then I don't quite understand what our purpose is up here. I thought our process was to receive the new information and and in terms of our public engagement aspect, this is the only time the public has a chance to provide input with respect to these motions. So with respect to what I heard the staff and the public saying, this is where this this modification amendment is coming from.
Yeah, no, it's it's a fair comment, Councilor Zelka. I'm there's a procedural issue here in terms of you can allow amendments up to a certain amount. I believe if this amendment were to pass, it would be it's it's substantially more. It's actually asking to change the entirety of the zoning bylaw to include a clause on on strata, you know, banning all stratas within that zoning bylaw, which doesn't currently exist. That's a significant shift from what we're considering here, which is do we allow this particular property to be included within that zone? So I'm just trying to get my head around, does this qualify as a as a amendment? Or is this really a substantively different motion than is being considered here? And my inclination here is to think it's actually it's not that you can't make amendments. It's just whether or not this amendment is within that that purview of the of the piece. And I'll just.
And in the wording of the motion, I included, or such wording as staff may suggest or effect to achieve the same. So I understand that the wording or the way it's been worded may not be correct. But I did finish it off with, or such wording as affected by staff to achieve the same. If that means it gets broken into two separate motions, I'm fine with that. But essentially, the essence is to ensure that we don't lose our rental stock to the use of this zoning that are are.
It's it's fair. I think I'm my ruling on this one, and I'll this is my my inclination here, and I'll turn to staff to see if there's any at peace. From a procedural perspective, I think this motion is not an amendment to the motion. This is an amendment to the zoning bylaw and would have to be separated. I believe a change like that to the zoning bylaw would have to be raised as through a notice of motion process to change the very nature of the of the zoning bylaw included. So I don't think I can allow that amendment to this particular motion. However, I am heartened by the fact that the staff said we there's even if that 18 month window is in fact a thing, we have lost the time to bring that motion forward to council. And you're welcome to do so and think, I don't think I can allow that amendment at this table tonight.
If I may?
Absolutely.
At the pleasure of council, I'm fine to convert that amendment to a notice of motion at the appropriate time.
Sure, that would be down to new business. Thank you very much. I think that's so that that motion to amend is now off the table. And we're back to the main motion now, which is third reading. Any other? And then I will call the question.
I guess I I'm just going to make some final comments. I made some previously, Mr. Mayor. But you know, the the most the the issue on the table is really whether to rezone duplex. And you know, I I'm going to vote in favor of this. But my reason for doing that is it's fully consistent with what we're aiming to do according to our OCP. But my my big concern is it's not actually about rental, though rental is an important housing strategy from my perspective, but not not here. Because we have already, as a council, decided that we're going to increase our rental stock with our secondary suite program. And there we have the potential to increase rental housing stock by by thousands, actually. But we have not talked about using our the few nonconforming duplex zoning for rental stock. And the issue for me is by starting to get focused on preserving rental stock by some of the strategies that have been suggested, is that we're taking away an important form of housing option that we need for the missing middle. And there aren't many places where we can do that. And we have these 50 or 60 nonconforming duplexes. And maybe at a certain point, we will be able to do this more collectively with all of them. But if this one is not preserved right now and moved over to duplexing, it's possible. None of us knows for sure, but this property then becomes at risk for being taken down. And then one very large, single family home could be constructed. And we've seen that happening throughout the community, where these larger lots, where there's nonconforming duplexes are taken down and very large, five, six, 7,000 square foot homes are put in. From what I've understood, when we went through the OCP, that is not the form of housing stock that we need in our established neighborhoods. We said we want a diverse range of housing options. And the this kind of housing that's offered to us with the duplex zoning is a rare commodity, but one that would fulfill families coming into the community and also permit families or or to to age out in the community because they're somewhat slow smaller. And they tend to be somewhat less expensive, whatever that means in in Oak Bay, but not as expensive as other forms. So I I will be voting in favor of the motion.
Thank you, Councilor. I just want to clarify that there's no we don't know exactly what the regulations are going to be on secondary suites at this point, but they are one of the of the housing options being considered as part of our housing framework, along with duplexes for that matter. Any other comments before I get to the question? Councilor Zelka?
A point of information. I was fascinated to find out that in NIMCO for duplexes with two living units, they outlaw secondary suites. Very interesting. And so I I hear the the suggestions from from my colleagues. I am just concerned on on this property that until we have strata controls in place that what's happened on Estevan will just continue to happen on the other RD1s. And I'm or potentially will become RD1. So I'm worried that we're going to just lose our rental housing. So until those controls are in place, I'll be voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Zelka. Any other comments? I'm I will say I'm comforted by the comments by staff, and I also feel that that debate about stratification or stratification is an important one as part of our housing framework discussion. But I think in this case, where we're looking to preserve a single duplex and and make it legal and allow it to be improved upon, I feel comfortable with the with the protections that are in place, especially as we consider those other options. Anything other comments? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Three opposed, Councilor Zelka, Councilor Patterson and Councilor Green. I'm voting in favor of this application, so on reconsideration, it passes. Thank you very much. That was item number 14. So just wrap your head around back and forth. I'm going to go back to item number one now, which is minutes. And are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Councilor Braithwaite?
Yes, for the public hearing minutes held on June 24th, it actually shows me as being present when I wasn't, and I actually didn't arrive until the new business section in the actual council meeting. So I think we perhaps we need to change that, but thank you.
Thank you. And I will point out, and I do appreciate for those of you who didn't notice, we've changed the formatting of our of our agendas this time around. With the public hearing is now very distinct from the from the council and an effort made to sort of separate the more formalized public hearing process from the council process because these have been corrections that we've had to make a few times over the years. So with that question, any other corrections, errors, omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much. Mayor's remarks?
Your worship?
Oh.
Sorry?
Move receipt of the minutes.
Move move approval of the amend of the minutes, the amended minutes of the minute of the public hearing held June 24th, 2019.
Moving seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None opposed?
Your worship?
Yes.
That bylaw that you just gave the third reading to was also on the floor for adoption at the last meeting, if you wanted to.
So we need to move adoption as well? Okay, sorry, my apologies. So we had third reading.
Move adoption.
Move adoption.
Second.
Moving seconded, any for the well, no discussion on adoption. All those in favor? Sorry, we're back just to the the Wooton duplex. Yeah. We did third reading. My I'm used to doing third reading and adoption. My apologies. So this is adoption. I audiences can't call point of order. Many members of council can call a point of order. I'm going to.
Is there not supposed to be a day between third reading and?
No.
I don't want to ask. Thank you.
No, there's not. So sorry, my my apologies for skipping that that stage. We're back to adoption on the Wooton bylaw 3531.104. All clear. So we have a mover and seconder. All those in favor? Opposed? Councilor Green, Councilor Patterson, Councilor Zelka opposed. The adoption passes. Thank you. My remarks will be mercifully short, given the hour. I just want to thank a couple of things. One, I just want to congratulate Ms. Hopkins, Deb Hopkins, who is taking over the role of Director of Corporate Services with the municipality of Oak Bay. She's been with us for a number of years and has done a phenomenal job in the role of assistant as a deputy director and really has brought a lot of strength to that role, and we're looking forward to some some continued improvements to all of our things. So we'll just see how little round of applause for. We just like to embarrass people at this at these meetings. So thank you, Ms. Hopkins, and congratulations on that. And I'd also like to take a moment to also embarrass, I mean, thank Mr. Jones, Warren Jones, who is our direct actually our current Director of Corporate Services and is retiring in very short timeframe here, and so his last meeting. So Mr. Jones has been with us for a number of a number of years and has really raised the level of both professionalism and knowledge base from his vast experience in in civic governance over the years. And I just want to thank you on behalf of council for all your years of service here and the great work that you've done, and it's going to be missed. Although we're happy to have Deb there, but it's you're definitely going to be missed. So thank you very much. All right, thank you. We're on to item number three now, which is the public participation period. As a chance for anybody from the audience to speak to any item of interest to Oak Bay. Just come forward to the microphone, which I will turn on. And the rules of order here, just you can just state your name and your municipality of residence. If you can write down your name as well, so we have the correct spelling. Each.
Graham Ross, Oak Bay. It's come to my attention that that council has retained a consultant to review the commissions and committees and how they are established, whether they're working well and so forth. But it's also, I believe, only the members of the various committees and commissions are being asked for their input. Now, I have I spent time in North Sanich on both the Advisory Planning Commission and the Parks Commission at different times. And I have no intention of applying to get on any commission. At this point, I'm over the hill. But I feel that there may be other people in the community, such as myself, who may be able to offer suggestions when it comes to the formation of commissions and committees. And therefore, I would like to recommend that council somehow provide for a public hearing, meeting, town hall, whatever you want to call it, to elicit from the general public their input into the makeup of commissions and committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, for the suggestion. Is there anybody else who wishes to come forward to speak to council? Please do. And again, the process is you have up to three minutes. And again, to speak your name and municipality of residence.
My name is Howard Johnson. I'm a resident of Oak Bay. And what I want to address is item number five, the proposal to erect the Sealar sculpture in front of 1450 Beach Drive. In front of my place. I already wrote a letter and I'm not going to go into my to repeat that stuff. But what I want to do is I'd like to. Well, my question is this. Really, is this or any other installation appropriate for the Oak Bay Beach Drive waterfront? And the reason I'm asking this is is some. And the reason I'm asking this is sometimes I don't think we fully appreciate what we already have. And that section there, that's just not a, any old waterfront. That is, that's a unique and spectacular location. And if you were to live down there or spend some time there, you'd see that section, it's a beautiful panorama and the water, the water changes day by day, the shoreline, it varies all over the place and it changes as the tide goes up and down. And we got Mary Todd Island over there, beautiful colors and shapes. And looking far over, we see the San Juan Island Mountains. And one of the most spectacular things is the cloud formations. They change by hour and they're just wonderful. And then the boats, well, maybe some of them not so great, but you know, they sit there and they're very, they add to it and our wildlife. And so without a doubt, I think, that's just a world-class view. So what I'm thinking is, why would one want to add an object in that, in that view, in that panorama that would distract from what we have now? The natural, all the Oak Bay, I mean, that's our trade of Oak Bay, right? So I would, I was, I don't know whether I should add this little thing, but I will. I think it's a little bit like making a slight modification to the Mona Lisa. Say we take and add a diamond necklace to her. The object would be beautiful, but the portrait would be diminished. And that's what I believe will happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Just come forward if you have any questions. There's a couple more people coming forward to speak. You can just stand behind and that's probably the simplest.
Good evening again. I'm Carol Ann Moore. I live in Oak Bay and same topic. Unfortunately, I'm going to read it this time because I got kerfluffle last time. I wrote to you during the last round of discussions on this subject and have written more recently. My objections remain unchanged. The idea of setting a precedent is one of the main concerns. Should you, should me, should you allow one person to erect a statue or artwork within the municipal boundaries, you then must grant the same permission to everyone who wants to take, pardon me, who wants some token of their existence placed on public display. What happens if five or 10 requests come in in a year? How do you say no to one when you've said yes to another one? What are the parameters and who will set them, especially should you receive multiple requests in a single year? What types of donations are going to be accepted? Currently, it's money. If someone already owns a piece of art and they want to donate it, can they just choose it, put it wherever they want? Do you have to accept it? Who decides where it's going to be put? Can the donor choose a spot? And how much clutter in the name of art can we be expected to have? I do hope these topics will be considered for your deliberations. And I have a copy here, which I will leave you of my last issues.
Thank you for writing your name down. The next speaker would come forward.
Hi, my name's Nancy Barnes and I've already written a couple of letters on this. So I know you framed them and committed them to memory, so I won't repeat them, but I did want to emphasize a couple other points pertaining to the Sealar Sculpture issue. And one of them is the process by which this, as has just been mentioned, by which this whole issue has come about. It concerns me greatly that without any meaningful public consultation, one person's whim, by virtue of a donation, can arbitrarily impose a landmark of their own choosing on our community. I find that extremely concerning. And the other concern, and I don't know if it's true, but I've heard that someone's planning to write a book and publish it pertaining to this thing, and this would be taking advantage of a public space to promote a personal project, which is completely unacceptable. So I'm hoping the community should not be obligated to accept one person's personal choice of both statue and placement. And I hope council won't allow that our natural seascape to be impinged upon by this statue. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Vicki Turner. I just want to heartily agree with the remarks of the previous speaker. I don't even, personally, I don't even think it's a great piece of art, let alone, you know, just visually. I think it's very kitschy looking. I wrote a letter over the week, you know, I wrote an email over the weekend. I think it's a very kitschy statue and would probably look all right in, maybe in, maybe in a children's park somewhere or at Disney World, and I'm quite serious about that. Thank you.
My name is Sharwin Minus, and you've had a lot of letters from me, from a few months ago and one that I wrote in recently. I've been thinking quite hard about this. I also, because you were, you had that public hearing just now, you probably didn't get a chance to look at the emails that were sent in, the correspondence that was attached to this statue motion. I counted them up, 55 people were against and six were for, just to let you know the numbers. And I worked out the percentage with a pen because I didn't have a calculator. I think I got it up to 86% that were against the placement of the statue in that place and most of them in any other place in Oak Bay. But referring to the suggested spot for the Sealar statue, I have two safety concerns. We live in a world of selfie takers, and if Stanley Park's experience with their scuba diving girl on a rock is anything to go by, we would have tourist buses backed up in the summer on a curve, which creates all sorts of traffic problems. Second, safety concern, I went and had a look at where this would be installed, and there is a big blocky sort of plinth already that is part of the stairway that goes down either side, and there's a railing on it. At the back of that platform, it's a sheer drop of at least, I would think, 12 feet, maybe more. And I envision ecstatic children running to climb on a slippery bronze statue after a shower and falling to, only to be injured or perhaps worse. I don't know how you would prevent that happening. This stretch of Beach Drive, as others have said, sandwiched as it is between two parks that already have sculptures, needs no further embellishment. As the statue is the subject, or going to be, going to be the subject of a fantasy story for children, I would like to suggest it be located in a playground, maybe Fireman's Park, or I heard today that there might be a water park at Carnarvon. I think that would be ideal. Then there's plenty of space for selfie-taking without backing up traffic and families would enjoy it. A large plaque could spell out the fictional backstory. It might encourage children to become art connoisseurs in later life. The donor wanted something whimsical that would make people smile, and this would please many families and walkers who go to parks. It might become as beloved of generations to come, as is the Peter Pan statue in Kensington Park, London. For future donations and the Arts Alive winners, could we earmark a piece of municipal land for a permanent sculpture park? The 10 entries each year could rotate through it and a predetermined number of places could be there for permanent acquisitions. This would make it so much easier to gracefully accept donations from the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minus. Does anybody else wish to come forward to speak on any issue?
My name is Geraldine Pete. I'm a longtime Oak Bay resident. I did write to you earlier in the year against this proposed Octavina sculpture. The only thing that has changed is not putting it on the rock in the bay. I still do not agree with putting this statue up on the Oak Bay waterfront. It would still compete with and distract from the iconic views of this bay. It is still a historically false, made-up folk tale with an unpleasant storyline. How would you explain this story to a child or an overseas visitor? I just think it's a very, it's not a very nice story and it's not uplifting. I really am against it. The donor is being very generous and I do appreciate that. Could he be persuaded to change his legacy gift to something else in his memory? For example, an ongoing bursary or scholarship at the Oak Bay High School? I know that he wants to leave a legacy and I really do appreciate his generosity, but perhaps it could be changed to something else. Mayor and council witnessed the traffic problems created on this busy roadway with the beach trimaran on the rocks earlier this year. If you insist on putting this sculpture on the scenic Oak Bay waterfront drive, why not put it where there's already a traffic pullout? I drove along the waterfront the other day and there is a pullout at the Victoria Golf Course at the crest of a hill, and there's also the Gonzales Hill King George Terrace Overlook where there'd be lots of room for tour buses to be pulling in and not blocking the traffic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pete. Anybody else wish to come forward? We'll take, talk about things other than bronze statues too, it's allowed. Anybody else have anything wish to come forward? All right, in that case, we'll end up our public participation period. Thank you very much, everybody who came and spoke to us. Much appreciated. We are on to item number four, which is a request from the World Idronimo Canoe Club for some financial assistance for the World Distance Outringing Championship. Should I turn to Ms. Varela or someone to give a quick overview? This is just essentially a grant application request from the canoe club. I think it's a pretty straightforward ask. Perhaps we can get a motion on the table and we can talk to it.
I'd like to move the recommended motion.
Second. Which is to approve $500 for the, any discussion. I would say, just make the observation that it's really not in compliance with what we usually do for our grant funding pieces, but I think it's important as part of our reconciliation efforts and efforts to support our First Nations partners and neighbors. So if you have further comments, we'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much. Hope they could all be that quick. Item number five, Sealar Sculpture, consideration of location. So we have a report from Director of Corporate Services on this item and just with the option of approving a location for a donated piece of art. I will, we've had obviously a number of people come forward and speak to this item and there is a fairly substantial amount of correspondence in here as well. So really, at this point, it's really to approve or not approve. There's a couple of comments made that I think I'd just like to address very quickly on this one. One, our job as here is really not to judge the art so much, is really looking at whether we consider this as a permanent location, although I would say the scale of the art would be reflected in this ask because obviously it does have an impact on the, on that site. And it's a, I'd also probably just like to point out that the, our ability to negotiate in this case is sort of limited. We have a, we have a very generous offer from a donor to offer to pay for a piece of art that was, he did not select the art, that was selected by the, by the arts committee as it's done through most of our adjudication process. And so?
I think he had input into it.
I believe he had input into it as well, yeah. So he approved it and it's now before us, and it just, he wanted it along the stretch. So it's really up to us whether or not we approve the site or not. It would essentially determine whether or not we accept the art or not. Counselor Zelka?
To open discussion, if I may. If there is an option for us to maybe just treat the, the piece of artwork as we do all of our artworks every year, where it gets put into the, is it 10 items or 12 items that get adjudicated by the arts group? And then of the 10 or 12 items that are basically throughout Oak Bay, that we already have plinths already set up? And then through that process, we already have an existing process where they get essentially adjudicated by the public? And then the one that's the favorite or the top two, we potentially buy. I mean, I really wish that this piece of artwork could just simply go right into the normal process as opposed to being treated outside of our existing procedures. I understand that it's coming to council asking for a special procedure and that's sticking in my craw, but I don't understand why we need to do that. So I want to ask the question to you or through you to staff, or if necessary, to our arts committee, arts folks, whether the process could be followed as we do for all of our pieces of artwork? Is that an option that we could consider?
I think I'm going to invite Ms. Adams to come forward if you're willing to do so on this. This is, we've had, this is a very different process for the ones that are the rotating artwork that are selected and the ones that are donated. There's been a number of pieces that have been donated. Yes, it's live now.
Is it on?
It is on. So welcome, Ms. Adams, who is, for those in the audience, the Arts Laureate.
Thank you. The process is different. Arts Alive is a call to artists and artists submit a piece to, to be considered for exhibition. If they wish their piece to be considered to vote on, that piece has to be worth $18,000 all in at the most. So this piece of, this piece of art could not be considered because it did not answer that call. We do have, we have talked about, we had talked about and is, I believe, in the, in the public art policy, that people can donate a piece of art, which would then come to the public art committee to see whether, and of course, parks and public works because it has to be technically sound. It would have to be able to withstand the weather and be safety, safety-proofed and all of that. So then if a piece was going to be donated that someone already owned, it would have to go through then the process, would it fit in our community? Would it be safe? And then the donor would, he would get, he or she or they would get a tax receipt, but they would also have to contribute 10% of the value for installation and upkeep. This process, this donation, this very generous donation by someone who loves Oak Bay was different in that he wished to give something of joy to the community because he has had a lot of joy out of the community. He has well-traveled. He's been in many art places around the world and a lot of communities around the world and can see how public art has enhanced the community. Now, of course, public art is, each piece of art is not liked by everybody. And in part of the letters and things that I know you received, though I scanned through them today, there was one that came in and for me, really mentioned, couldn't say any better what, what we've, what is felt about art. Art is never meant to please everyone, but rather be a free expression of someone's emotions, feelings, and creativity. Everyone has talents, talent being perceived differently depending on the viewer. You don't have to like it, but disliking it does not give you the right, in my opinion, to decide whether or not the public display of such a piece should or should not be. in my opinion, to decide whether or not the public display of such a piece should or should not be. You always have opinion, you always have the option to look the other way. I don't personally like this form of art, but some folks might. And it's okay to be displayed for their enjoyment." And they then gave their opinion that they found the argument about a specific piece of art more offensive than the art itself. As far as the choosing of this piece of art, it, the donor was part of the group, which also included people from the art gallery. It, we received 32 submissions. Those submissions were all looked at for artistic value and the criteria in the call, which did include, which did include something to bring a smile to the face, to one's face. And it also went through a rigorous look by Parks and Public Works for safety and sustainability.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
If I may take this opportunity for one more question?
Please do.
Thank you so much and thank you so much for providing all this wonderful information and being such a resource to council on this difficult, this difficult question or these difficult for me. One possibility, if this could be a temporary installation, I would tend to be personally more in favor of it so that we could try it out, so we could see whether it actually was a safety issue, so we could see how many kids were actually being hurt per year falling off of this thing, to see whether someone knocks their head off, God forbid. You know, just to find out, you know, will it put up with the wind? I don't know, or the weather. I'd like to ask whether the possibility of it being a temporary installation, similar to what we do for our other Arts Alive items.
I'll actually jump in there, just I think it's, we need to find a home for it. And second of all, we own, we will own both the art and the location. So we have every opportunity of changing our mind at future times should we decide to do that. There's nothing we're doing here that would bind council, this council or future councils, from changing our mind about the location.
If I may add something with your permission?
Go ahead, Ms. Adams.
I just wanted to say that the base and the location and the safety part of it will be engineered. We have an engineer who's worked on the base to make sure that it would be sustainable. I believe you saw the drawings of the base in the last go-round. They would apply to this location as well. And of course Parks and Public Works will be part of making sure that there will be, it will be safely, you know, barring if somebody wants to jump over the railing. I mean, that's not something that we can police against.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, if I may, just a last question then. I threw you to staff, maybe Director of Engineering, with respect to safety. Is there an intention to fence off this item? Or if we do find that there, I presume there'll be a sign to say, "Do not climb." But if that sign is not being respected, is there, what controls will be in place to keep people from, because that was one of the big concerns that I have as well as I heard some of the public say about safety and the potentials for fall, falling from this plinth on the far side. It is quite a distance. And so a question through you to staff, how will we keep this safe? Especially if kids are climbing on it?
If you can answer the "how," please do so. If you can just, if not, then perhaps you can answer "if" you would keep this safe.
Well, through you Chair, I have, Engineering Services at this time, myself or anybody, haven't been asked this question yet. So it's not something that I can weigh in this, like at this moment with an answer. It would be something that we need to take away and look at and come back with an answer.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, Counselor Patterson, I think you had her hand up first, then Counselor Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess when, in considering this, certainly my-
Can you speak up a little bit higher?
My preference would be, you know, I recognize what so many have said and that the, I recognize, like many others, the shoreline in Oak Bay is a very precious thing to the community and the natural shoreline is greatly appreciated. The difficulty I have with the installation, particularly having attended the BC Heritage Conference in Anima in May, was that a lot of the roundtable discussions we were having about inclusive and greater diversity and voices in the communities. We start all of the council meetings recognizing that we are on traditional lands. And I think in sensitivity to that, we need to hopefully find also a way to bring more diverse discussion to matters of installations on the shoreline. So I'm concerned about the precedence this sets, again, for individuals by donating a piece that we then must find a home for, is a difficult road to embark on. And I don't know how we contain that in a way going forward. I would very much like to see council perhaps come up with a policy for installations of any type on the shoreline and going forward. So I have difficulty supporting this location for this piece of sculpture.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Counselor Braithwaite?
Thank you. I just wanted to get a clarification. I think I heard you say, Mr. Mayor, that the statue and location are owned by us, the municipality, so could be moved by us, the municipality, at any time. Is that correct?
I can see no reason why we would not be allowed to move our own art on our own property.
So my concern there then would be that if the donor has, is donating a statue and we have said it's going in this location and they think, I mean, are they under the assumption that it's going to stay in that location for perpetuity? Or are they aware that that location could be changed at any time? Because I would hate if I was the donor and had donated something like that and thought that it was going to stay there and then I pass away and then after I pass away, that statue gets moved. I'm just wondering if he's aware of that or not.
Ms. Adams?
Well, we haven't, we haven't crossed that bridge, but we did, we did talk about the idea that when he donates this piece to the municipality, the municipality then has ownership. And if it did become a safety issue or any other issue, that would have to be dealt with.
Just a follow-up question, if I may, Mayor?
Absolutely.
So what I think I heard you say was that he understands that once the statue is donated to us, that it's our property. So does that mean that he's going to donate it to us and then allow us to choose the location for it? Or he's donating it to us with the assumption that the location will be the location that's attached to this proposal?
I believe that he believes it is attached to this location. However, what I am also adding is that if it did become a problem, that's another issue. And in other words, we couldn't change the location without good reason. Without sound reason.
Well, I don't think that's what I heard the mayor say, though.
Well, there's a difference between you can't or you shouldn't, I think that's it.
Well, I'm not, I don't have any power in this decision.
Yeah, I think we're trying to reflect the wishes of the donor in this case of considering a sighting on this land. And if, my understanding is if it's not somewhere along this sort of, somewhere along Beach Drive and this sort of walk, it would not be, not be considered as a donation. But, and that's his choice to make. But it is not, I guess my point is it doesn't bind our hands in the future. There's, we do own the property and the, and the. Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, Your Worship. I can't support the placement of the sculpture in its current location. And it is nothing to do with, as you noted and as others have noted, it has not, I make that decision not based on the artwork itself, the quality or the, or the nature of the artwork at all, but the fact that we don't have a defined process and policy for dealing with donations of this nature. And I appreciate the work that the Arts Committee does and we have lots of knowledgeable people that support our decision-making through that. But I think that the fact that we're dealing with this here and it keeps popping back up at council reveals the fact that we don't have a strong policy to follow. We have a finite amount of public space in Oak Bay. And so I think it's reasonable for us to tread carefully when we're talking about the placement of infrastructure. And infrastructure is not the right word here because that, I don't mean to demean the value of art because it has a value all of its own. But we literally have only so many placement locations for these types of works. The Arts Alive program is significantly different in the sense that it's there temporarily. We have plinths that everybody sort of knows this is where the art is going to be happening. So I, and I also echo the comments of Counselor Patterson with regards to that there's a strong opportunity for reconciliation here in conjunction with the habitat on the foreshore. So I just have pretty strong reservations about that one specific location and just the fact that we don't have a strong accession policy, for want of a better word, for donated works of art and where they might go.
Go to Counselor Green in a second. Ms. Adams, we've had other pieces of art donated. My understanding was that those donations came to this body and we approved the location at that time, like the one in the scented garden. Has that been a process that we've followed in the past?
Yes, we've had, is this on?
Yes.
We have had several pieces donated. The gardener's gown by Petto, as you say, in the scented garden. The Bodie Frog on Willow's Beach by the Clog family. And we've had, then we have had the Salish Sea, which is a First Nations piece, a beautiful First Nations piece on Turkey Head. That was donated in part by the community. And over half of the payment for that came from people from the community who wanted the piece. The hunt, the wolves and the deer, that came from a donation, from, over half from the community again. And also a $10,000 one-time grant from the previous government. Also-
It's a comprehensive enough list, I think, anyway. For my clarification, on the Bodie Frog one, I don't remember that process. Was that, and that permanent, that was a temporary piece that was then purchased and donated?
It was a temporary piece and then after the voting, it wasn't chosen. But it was well-loved by, by someone along, who lives along there and they purchased it. Well, first of all, they asked if they could donate it and it had to be, we looked at it and made, you know, we had made sure that it was safe and could last a long time. And then that was okayed. So-
Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to get my head around what process we followed in the past, so it's-
So that, what, what process, what happened in this process? As a matter of fact, the intent was to have the final three of, that came, that were chosen in the, in the, in jurying, in the jurying process from the 32, to be put into, to be examined by the, by the community. However, Parks and Public Works felt that two of those pieces, when they looked at the maquettes when they were done, were not going to be suitable for longevity.
Okay, thank you.
So that came down to one.
Counselor Green?
Thank you, Your Worship, and I appreciate the comments of my colleagues and also the work that you do through you, Mayor, to Ms. Adams, the work you do with your committee. And I think the Arts Alive program is an amazing program for Oak Bay and has provided tremendous, a great asset to the community. But this particular issue has generated so much negativity and I am concerned about that only because I think the Arts Alive program has achieved so many positive things for the community over the past years. And I don't want its credibility tested or challenged because of one installation or one issue that we haven't been able to resolve satisfactorily. So I guess those are my concerns primarily, following on the comments of my colleagues. But this should be a positive experience and it should inspire the community. And that's my concern. Thank you.
Can I speak to that?
Go ahead, Ms. Adams.
I just want to say, first of all, the sculpture itself, I believe, will be a good sculpture. It, I believe that, yes, there was some thought that the, there would be a legend that, or a lore that would, a story that would go along with it. For me, art is art and I knew, I do know that the school classes have been using, or the teachers have been using some of the art around for writing purposes and critical thinking purposes. And I feel that this piece would be of benefit to that, for that, for sure. I guess I'm a little worried, the maquette was really never put in public view and the maquette has changed since the photograph that has been widely, widely distributed, has changed. In other words, it went back to the original face that was on the sculpture when it was juried. In other words, it doesn't have the surprise look. It has a demure look and it makes the, it makes the effect of looking at the sculpture much different than the, than that widely distributed photograph. So I'm a little dismayed about that. But having said that, I know that council will make the decision that has to be made. And I would, I would really like to say that honoring, honoring the donor is, is an important thing to me and the, his generosity and his intent. I think that because the community would own the sculpture, we'd initially, we would have its final, you know, control.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Counselor Zelka for another time?
Thank you very much, Chair. Through you to staff and our Arts Laureate. So I can't support this location where it's being proposed on the waterfront. But I do want to ask with respect to the inspiration comment, so many of the other pieces of artwork that have come through your wonderful Arts Committee and the Arts Alive program bring such, some such love and such inspiration to the community. And part of that is the context. And that's really one of the issues I have with this particular item. I don't feel the context is appropriate. So to me, there's a dissonance that's not working. But I do want to ask with respect to context, and I thought some of the ideas brought forward by the public were quite fascinating. Would the proponent, or maybe if we, if we said that we'd be fine to put, for example, the Carnarvon Rotary Water Park in a situation such as that, I mean, somewhere near water, but also at the same time in a safe place, something that would bring joy certainly to the children, would the, would the proponent or the donor be suitable with something like that?
I did, we did, we did, we have talked alternative locations when the rock was not available. We did talk alternative locations and he would like it, he would prefer or would want it to be on the seashore. He feels, and it is a unique piece and I, you know, so.
Thank you. Any other comments, conversation? I'll just, I'm, you know, I'm inclined to support the application. I think at the end of the day, getting generous- I think at the end of the day, getting generous donations like this are few and far between. And the fact that we do have ultimately control over it, if it's not seen to be an appropriate location once it's in, I, I think that, that overweight it for me. And I think the positive aspects of, of the art overweight it. I, I do hear, I think I'm hearing a majority who are saying they're not comfortable with location. And I, I do hear the, I think the desire to have more collaboration with our First Nations partners and finding art places like we do for the Salish Sea is, is, is a good policy to have. And certainly I think cleaning up our policies for art along the shoreline is a, is a very good one. So unless there's any further comment, I'll call the question on, on the recommendation. Oh, do we have a motion? Okay, well, can I get a?
Your worship, there's no motion on?
Yeah, no, that's fine. So I need a motion?
If I may move the motion that council considered placing this at the Carnarvon Water Park.
So option number, sorry, I don't have the option number two. Okay. So prove it if it's, if it's located at the Carnarvon Water Park. Do you have a second for that?
I'll second that so we can discuss.
I don't want to discuss this very long, so. If, is there any, I mean, the motion is to approve the location of this at the Carnarvon Water Park if the donor agrees to that location. Any, any further discussion? Councillor Appleton?
Thank you, your worship. I, I was thinking that something related to that might work better, just in the sense of potentially approaching the donor and essentially coming to a decision point by asking the donor whether or not they would be willing to donate the sculpture, provided that its placement was at the discretion of the district. And then, you know, as unfortunate as that is, unfortunately, that does put us in the position of essentially saying to the donor, who we all acknowledge as being extremely generous in this regard, that they need to be comfortable with the idea of donating the sculpture in that context, rather than, you know, that they, unfortunately, that we're more than happy to receive the sculpture and, and we think that it is a very generous donation, but that as a district, we still need to exercise some control over placement.
Is that an amendment to change the wording?
I don't know whether I can amend the
It's not an amendment, it's a motion right now. You can amend it to, to that wording.
Okay, then I would propose an amendment to councillor Zelka's motion that instead of proposing the location at Carnarvon Park, to approach the donor to ask whether, well, to essentially communicate from council that donation of the sculpture would be contingent on council's decision-making as to location.
And I'd be fine to second that.
I'm just gonna turn to Mr. Jones.
Your worship, I just want to be, that totally changes the intent of the original motion, so.
Then the concept of a friendly amendment, I'd be fine to also withdraw my motion.
You are willing to withdraw, the second are willing to withdraw the motion? So we have withdrawal of that motion, then we have a fresh motion on the floor. If you could maybe, check it to staff, just to kind of come up with the, with the wording that would be appropriate here, is that, no, I'm getting an eye roll. Councillor Appleton, would you restate the?
Certainly hope so. I would like to make a motion to direct the, well, I suppose it would be to direct staff to work with the arts laureate, to approach the prospective donor of the sculpture, to communicate that receipt of the sculpture, that, that, that council, it's council's intent that the donation of the sculpture be contingent on council having discretion on its placement.
Fundamentally second.
Okay, so we can fine tune that wording as we
Your worship, absolutely, we get, we get the point.
Thank you. Councillor, councillor Apple, or councillor Bree Thwait?
Thank you. I mean, this is so hard because it's a decision where the juxtaposition of the community interests and the donor's desire where neither dominates over the other, I think, you know? And so we're kind of put in a really tough position. I really want to, I really want to honor what the donor is, is doing and the desire of the donor to bring a piece of artwork to us, but I also want to really, on the other side, put the community interests at the forefront as well. So I'm hoping that this will be very agreeable to the donor, because honestly, I, I truly believe that this piece of artwork would do much better at a place like Carnarvon Water Park or another park where children could be able to touch it and feel it and do whatever with it. So my hope is that the, that the, the donor will be in agreement with this. So I'll be voting for the motion.
I'm gonna let councillor Ne speak and then councillor Green, this is to the motion.
Just very quickly, I, I mean, I, I appreciate what's being put forward here, councillor Appleton, and to come up with something that will work, given the conversation that's unfolded here at the table. But one of the things we do need to recognize, I'm sure it's on the minds of everybody, is that there is a risk that we lose the piece of, the donation, of course. And so what it brings to my mind is that it's really, we really need to get our house in order here in future, because we've led this process, we've allowed it to unfold for some time now, with an understanding that we just haven't quite got the right place. And now we put a motion like this and it may be the best we can do right now, but I, I don't think it's a fair process for somebody who's, and, and for our committee, our arts committee, who's done all this work to get it to this place as well for any prospective donor. So, so I hope that we can work with the commission or somebody to come up and refine that arts policy in this regard.
Thank you, councillor Ne. Councillor Green?
I would echo those sentiments. I, I think we do need clear policy, so there's clarity for the, for the arts committee and clarity for the community. I think this is a good motion. It, it tries to establish some middle ground and it, it's always difficult when it's an either or situation. And I think this is a real, a sincere attempt on the part of council to find middle ground for this issue. And we are very grateful for the very generous donation that we've received and all the work that the arts committee has done with the donor to make this possible. So I think that's an important message that, that the donor needs to know how much, how grateful we are.
Thank you. See no other discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed on that? So we have that going forward, thank you. Let's go through a few things, procedure. We have a, has our cut off at 10 o'clock here? 10:30, okay, so let's try and get through this before then, for sure. Item number six, advisory design panel minutes, the motion to receive?
Move receipt.
Seconded, any discussion, all those in favor, opposed, non-opposed? Number seven, advisory design, advisory planning commission minutes?
Motion to receive minutes of advisory planning.
Yeah, councillor, before you say the second? Okay, moved and seconded, go ahead, councillor Ne.
I do notice on the, the minutes here, that have just disappeared, that, sorry, there was something brought up about the regional context statement and that there were two items that, that, that are going to require some changes, as I understood, in ROCP, and that's Food Systems and Climate Action, which we haven't yet addressed. So I, I, I mean, I, I, I thought that was interesting and I think it is something that we do need to take seriously. So I'll look forward to, I'm not sure how staff intends to bring that forward, but I'll look forward to seeing those and that we work together to formulate some priorities around both those items.
Thank you, councillor Ne. I don't want to have a long debate about this. Councillor Zelka, go ahead.
My question was also about the regional growth strategy and I'll extend the comments I heard and ask you, through you to staff, if they could please comment on not only those two items, but also some aspect of a public hearing process? What, what is that about please and what's being proposed here? Thank you.
Ms. Jensen?
Well, you were gonna hear all of this from me at the next council meeting, but I'll do a summary now. Essentially, with the adoption of the regional growth strategy, which council saw in 2018, we now have to update our regional context statement in our OCP to match the new regional growth strategy. As councillor Ne pointed out, there are now two new sections of the regional growth strategy relating to food security and to climate change. We do have some general policies in the community plan right now, so we're not, at this point, proposing to add any new additional policy into the OCP. I think that's something that, to be considered a later date with, with some of council's direction. At this point in time, what we're doing is updating those other five sections that are already in the context statement, as well as pointing to some of the policy that we already have in the community plan. So we've been working with CRD staff to prepare that regional context statement or the update to it. That will be coming to your next council meeting. And should council give the, the bylaw to update that context statement first and second reading, then we send it over to the board for the, for the regional district. If they accept it, then it comes back to Oak Bay for a public hearing process.
Good, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor, receipt. Opposed, non-opposed, thank you very much. Before I get too far ahead of myself, item number eight, heritage revitalization agreement, 2031 Runnymede Avenue, waiting patiently here. Yes, we did. So this is, I, I have to procedurally actually split this, my apologies to the applicants who are here. We'll first have to, because this was left as an open piece. There's three aspects of this. The second, you really have to come down under the resolutions, part of our agenda for consistency. So I'm just gonna ask that we, at this time, rescind the second reading of 2031 Runnymede Avenue?
Move to rescind?
We'll consider the other two parts later, moved and seconded. This is the second reading that was done in 2018. We're just gonna rescind this and allows us to discuss the second reading at the procedural piece. Yeah, so in, under the resolutions, so let's move these rest to the resolution section, the, the next two pieces, if that's okay. Sorry for the confusion here in the, in the piece. So moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed and opposed? We'll deal with the other two aspects of that, of the consideration of second reading and setting a public hearing date under the resolution section of the agenda. We don't need to formally receive correspondence, I don't believe, no? So we're just on to new business and verbal reports. New business? Councillor Zelka, you, you mentioned that you might want to do a notice of motion on, on the possibility of relooking at the duplex zoning?
Thank you, Chair, but I, I, I have a question on procedure. With respect to item number eight, are we finished or are we actually?
No, it's just, I'm splitting it so the, the second two portions of that are gonna be moved to the resolution section just after this portion.
So then, at this point, we're noticed in new business?
Yes, we're starting
So, yes, I would like to move a notice of motion, please, with respect to the adding the strata plans are not allowed under RD1. And I will supply the wording to staff for the next council meeting.
It doesn't have to be the next council meeting, but future council meeting, just give yourself some wiggle room there. Thank you for that notice. Any other new business? Seeing none, I, there's nothing substantial to report on the Kappa Regional District at this time, so I'll leave that alone. And is there any other verbal reports? And I'll, I'll go, Appleton, in a round, if that's okay, sorry. Councillor Appleton?
I see the advantage of being first on the alphabetical order list. I will just provide a really, very brief update, given the hour. After our last, the day after our last council meeting, I was pleased to attend the library board meeting as, as trustee. The most salient piece of information that council should hear is that I was pleased to be able to pass along our approval of my motion brought forward to advocate for greater funding for libraries. We were ahead of the curve on that one. Everybody was talking about who was going to be the next one to do it, so I was very proud to be able to walk in and say that ours had been done the night before. So thanks very much to council for your support on that. That initiative is gaining, from what I understand, a great deal of momentum, so it was, it was very well received. And I think it should, a very strong message is, is going to go forward. The other piece of information that we did discuss there that would be of interest to council would be some advocacy that's happening under, on access to electronic journals. And this fits in with just my ongoing sort of impression of the professionalism of the library system that we support. There was a discussion around the ongoing, just the, the, the ongoing discussions that the librarians have to have as far as the access to digital publications, licensing for those things. It's extremely complex and it's a constantly shifting playing field and they constantly have to renegotiate contracts and there's a lot of concern about the costs and the ongoing access to electronic publications for people who need them. So there's an advocacy campaign going on related to that, which I think is, is a real positive thing. And that's, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, councillor Appleton. Councillor Bree Thwait?
Yes, I'd just like, it seems like so long since we, we had a meeting where we can talk about things, so I'm trying to remember all the things that happened. But very quickly, just a thank you to the Parks, Rec and Culture staff for putting on a wonderful barbecue on the lawn of municipal hall for Canada Day. It was a great celebration and I think everybody had a wonderful time. It's always nice to be able to give out free food and, and chat with everybody who's, who comes to visit. So that was wonderful. And we also had, we also have coming up this week, or that night, we also had some music in the park, which was very well attended. And this week we have night markets on Wednesday and music in the park again on Thursday. So I hope to see everybody there.
Councillor Green, anything?
Thank you, it, it has been a long time. I, first of all, we attended, I attended with other council colleagues, a great workshop that was put on by Deb Hopkins, I think, I don't think we've had a meeting since then, have we? On, and thank you, Deb, for organizing that, on freedom of information and protection of privacy, which is always a bit scary, but it, it was a really good webinar and I'm, I'm very grateful to Deb for doing that. And then I attended the Opie Tourism Committee meeting this week and that was very positive and it's, that is a great group, Hazel. So, and I see Michelle is here and I didn't say that for your benefit, Ms. LaSage, but seriously, it's, it's a very interesting group and it, it's a fun group and I, I learned a lot about our community through this affiliation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ne, anything?
The participating in the pride parade that the mayor invited all of us to attend and some were able to, councillor Patterson was there and it was a remarkable event. I, I, there must have been tens of thousands, I'm not sure of the number, but that event has got so big and so many people attending. It was very impressive and the energy and of people down there, it, it was, it was something to go to and be part of. So thanks for the invitation, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say one more thing, if I may, on that, is I think it was quite clear to us that though we attended, we weren't particularly well-prepared. We were kind of stealing little flags from our sandwich counterparts, but that we did have some kind of talk about next year and we said, we need to have Hazel there dressing us up, so.
I'll come back. Councillor Patterson? Councillor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. So in addition to the Oak Bay annual report, which is out for comment, the CRD water quality, drinking water quality, 2018 annual report is also out and I encourage everyone to read it and hear all the wonderful things that, that CRD is doing with it for our water. Thank you.
Councillor Green, you had something else to add?
I did, I, I just wanted quickly to acknowledge the mayor and our staff for putting up the pride flag. I believe it was last Friday to commemorate Pride Week, I really appreciated that, maybe more so because I donated that flag a long time ago and it, it's wonderful to see it still flying over, over the hall for these occasions, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Green, for that, donating that to the municipality. I just, the, a couple of things might be just of interest to council was just, I did attend this South Island Prosperity Partnership AGM and then the partners meeting and there's some interesting work they're trying to do post not getting the, the federal award, so there's some, some things coming down the pipe. I also had the, the pleasure of attending the, there's a mayor's working group, I've been working for a couple of years, on, on looking at oversight models for police governance of integrated units. So under the Police Act, there's a requirement for civilian oversight of police, police departments, but integrated units that operate, you know, between, things don't actually have a formal oversight body. So there's been a fair bit of work going on over the last couple of years. We've had now a series of meetings and this time, the ADM and Director of Police Services, Brenda, about it with Carr, attended and, and I think we're pretty close to coming up with some models that might work for us as a, as a region to provide some level of, of civilian oversight, some sort of mayor's board that would meet periodically. So that was very interesting and I think a good step for, for good effective oversight and management. And the second is the, I think, we also had a mayor's lunch today, which is, we try to do it on a regular basis and we talked about a wide-ranging set of issues that affect the region, very positive. And one of them actually is that we're looking at just putting together a joint, everything other than Victoria float or gathering for the pride parade next year, so that we don't have to kind of sort these things out individually, we can just kind of show up and, and be part of that. So amongst quite a few other more, probably more salient and important issues, so I'll just summarize that. Anything else under reports? and important issues. So I'll just summarize that. Anything else under reports? All right. Thank you very much, everybody, for all the work that you do. We're down to item number, make sure I'm getting my numbers right, because these, with fifth, right, so really, well, actually, we're really, yeah, we're making, sorry, I'm going to go by the numbers. It's really, number eight of the HRA moved into the resolution phase. We'll call it number 15 on this sheet. Yes, so number 15 for second reading is amended. So this is, so subject to our decisions, we've agreed to rescind the previous reading, to give second reading to 2031 Runnymede Avenue Heritage Revitalization Agreement. Ms. Jensen, this does deserve, I think, a little bit of a, a summary of how we got here efficiently.
All the pressure. So council previously considered this HRA last summer, gave it first and second readings at that time. Public hearing was subsequently held in September. Following that public hearing, the applicants have subsequently been reconsidering the application and are proposing some modifications to the agreement. The application is intended to still facilitate a two-lot subdivision. The existing heritage home would retain the secondary suite on one lot, and a new second lot to the north would allow for that second dwelling unit. It's exactly the same subdivision layout as what was previously seen by council. They are, however, now advising that they're no longer requesting the sighting for the detached garage that would go with the heritage home. They are removing the request for variances to cite the proposed dwelling unit on the, on the new lot. That means that any new dwelling unit on there would have to meet the requirements of the zoning. It has also been revised to reflect some other changes. So essentially, some of the wording has been updated to reflect legal terminology. The select variances, as noted, have been removed from the agreement. And variance that was mistakenly referred to as lot frontage is actually lot width, has been revised to 18.7 meters instead of the rounded up 19 meters. At this point in time, council can decide if they want to give it second reading and set a public hearing date.
Okay, thank you. And, and for many people, it's just a fairly new, new viewing of this application. Are there questions of, of Counselor Zalka?
Thank you very much, Chair. Through you to staff. One of the questions I had, reading to the last time this came before council, and maybe the same question is still there. With respect to the Heritage Revitalization, you said that the house is to be designated, but in 1980, is it? It was the house and lands that were designated. So I understand that the old bylaw is to be removed and the lands are being undesignated? But what's being done with the lands going forward?
Well, at this point in time, that designation bylaw stands as it is. There's no change to the designation bylaw at this point.
So the intention of this moving forward is that the lands would continue to be designated going forward?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The, the current house lands, not the subdivided property lands?
The designation bylaw refers to the entire lands right now, so it would, it would affect both properties at this point.
Okay, with less meaning on the second property, obviously, without structures to designate. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just if we could get clarification, does this HRA then restrict future subdivisions? And if not, what process would be required in the future?
Ms. Jensen?
There is no clause in the revitalization agreement to restrict future subdivision. Because this is an agreement, similarly with a no subdivision clause, those types of documents can always be opened up. So it's not necessarily something that my opinion would work very well.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson?
And just, I, I tried to do a lot of reading on this because I, I don't have the benefit of having the background experience of the other members of council who viewed this the last time it came to council. Just if you could comment on the sighting of a new dwelling and the impact on neighboring properties?
Ms. Jensen, I believe this has essentially removed the citing components of the application. It's essentially just saying it's a lot and we'll have to comply.
Thank you, Mayor. So if I may, the, again, the subdivision layout has not changed from the previous version seen by council. So the subdivision law lines, interior law lines, lot frontage remains as is. The applicant is proposing to remove the garage that's currently sitting on that second lot. That means that the new dwelling would have to sit within the building footprint that would be provided through the, through the RS4 zone.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And just a few comments, if I may. I was sitting on the Heritage Commission at the time this first came forward, and there were a number of comments, some of which have been addressed in Ms. Jensen's report and through you, Mayor, too, Ms. Jensen. There were a number of points that the Heritage Commission at the time, I think some years ago, had asked about, and you've covered off some of them, but there were, there were, there was a concern and they wanted protected the rock walls and features in the original statement of significance to be included in an HRA statement of significance or agreement, and that the sighting of the new house would be resolved to minimize the impact on the shading and the adjoining neighbor's yard, which I think that has been achieved now with the changes, I believe. Is that correct? The shadowing issue is not?
Ms. Jensen?
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, I wasn't sure, but it sounded as though with the revisions that have been made and changes by the owner, that maybe some of that would be minimized?
Well, again, depending on what came forward for that single-family home on the new lot, they would be subject to the requirements of the RS4 regulations.
Right.
So they would still be restricted in terms of floor area, in terms of lot coverage, in terms of maximum height. But it's difficult to know what that would look like, depending on where it had ended up sitting, on the lot and the size of the home.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Zalka?
One last thing. I know, I'm trying to be quick here. One thing that would help me with this item going forward and would reduce many questions would be if, when it finally comes to council or public hearing and the whole process, if it's possible to see the original statement of significance that may be around the time of 1980 or whatever that is, or maybe a, a stark description, or maybe something that would be, would describe the value that was being captured with respect to the land and, and building designations back then. I, I see that a lot of the statement of significance, the more up-to-date ones are being provided, but I would love to be able to compare the two, please.
Do we even have this? Oh, you have it there? Okay.
If I may, we do have it. Essentially, the original statement of significance for Blair Gowie, the, the heritage value itself, the wording has been updated, but the content is essentially the same. In terms of the character-defining elements, they, the applicant, the, the consultant, the heritage consultant who was working for the applicant, they did remove two sections from the character-defining elements. One of those being the interior features. As most of you know, there were, the, the designation bylaw did not contain any features for the interior of the home. And the applicants have spent a considerable amount of time updating the homes, so that section of the, the elements has been removed. The other section that has been removed did refer to the rock terraces. I think there was some discussion at the time respecting the location of those rock terraces. Again, the applicant has done considerable works with landscaping, so there are a lot of rock gardens in there. Whether that's considered the rock gardens or not, I think was the reason why that was removed.
Okay, thank you. I think that would be a question, certainly, for the public hearing portion of it, but it's consistent with the previous statement of significance that was in front of council. Any other questions? Yep. I just, I guess I will, I, I'm supportive of this going forward. I will say, I, from the interest of the community, I know there was a significant pushback at the last public hearing on, on some aspects, particularly of the, of the proposed house that was on the second lot, concerns of shading and pieces. And I, you know, I think this is probably the safest way to go politically, but I'm not sure it's the best output from a, from a community perspective. I think the actual efforts made by the applicant last time to find sighting of the house and, and, and making a much smaller house than would be legally allowed on the lot, actually provided a lot of benefit to the community. And I, I'm sad to see that go, frankly. I think that it was a nice, it was a nice approach to, to managing that. But I think this is, at the end of the day, probably the best course of action going forward. And I'm supportive of it, certainly going to public hearing. Counselor Green?
Thank you. I too am supportive in principle of this going forward, but through you, Mayor, to Ms. Jensen, has the Heritage Commission seen this new application, do you know? Or is that part of the process now again or not? I'm sorry, I'm just, it's just a question because I'm not sure now. Would, would they have an opportunity to comment or not?
Ms. Jensen?
Through you, Mayor. At this point in time, no, it has not gone back to the Heritage Commission. Again, the layout has not changed. What's, what has been removed are pieces, components that would not be subject to that, that heritage consideration. But council can certainly look at referring that back if they chose to.
Thank you.
So right now, we're at, sitting at first reading, considering second reading of this application. And certainly from a process perspective, the intention here is that if it's a, we don't take comments from the, from the audience on this process. Counselor Zalka?
So, a question then, in terms of procedure. If we were to refer this to the heritage, this would be the time to do it, I presume?
It would. I think we'd be, have to be fairly specific about what we're asking them for. We've had it go to the, like, the heritage aspects of the application, so we're really looking at the, primarily here, the aspects of the, of the second lot.
I'll defer to others more knowledgeable in heritage on council, on that one.
I don't think it's, it's harmful to ask staff opinion here. I mean, is, is procedurally, I think you stated that it's not normally going through to heritage twice on this. Is there, is there aspects of this that, that you, that you feel would be worth getting us an additional opinion on, on the heritage aspects? Is that, I don't need to put you on the spot. I'm sorry. I, I can, I can take back that question.
Well, there was robust conversation at Heritage Commission respecting the home itself. Everything to do with the home in terms of that agreement stays the same as is. One of the things that didn't go to the commission with the original application was the sighting of the proposed detached garage to go with the home, but that has since been removed. So that hasn't changed from what the Heritage Commission originally saw. And again, to clarify, at this point in time, that designation bylaw does not change, so it's still protecting the lands and the building. So, like I said, council can, can choose if they want to take it back to the Heritage Commission, or you can stand as is with, with what they know already. They, they have seen this property on multiple occasions for, for different aspects of the home. But if council wants more addition from the Heritage Commission, or if they feel like they had, don't have enough information yet, we could certainly bring something back to council before it goes to public hearing.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any motions. So if we're following the procedure here, if there's, again, if there's feeling that this has enough merit to go forward and, and be considered for public hearing, we look at the two motions to give second reading and then set a public hearing date proposed for September 9th. Counselor Green?
Just very quickly, a question through you, Chair.
Please.
To Ms. Jensen, would it be possible to share the most current information, though, with, with the commission? Not for comment necessarily, but just for information purposes? Or, or would that, would that be inappropriate?
Well, they have a meeting tomorrow night, so we can certainly give them the updated plan.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Bree?
I'll make a motion to give second reading to 2031 Runnymede Avenue Heritage Revitalization Agreement by Law Number 4696 to enter into a Heritage Revitalization Agreement as part of the proposal to develop two single-family residential lots at 2031 Runnymede Avenue. And, can I do both at once?
I think, no, we'll do them separately.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, not opposed? And then submitting, setting a public hearing date?
I will also move to set a public hearing on bylaw number 4696 to be held at the Oak Bay Municipal Hall on September 9th, 2019 at 6:00 PM in council chambers, and that notice be given in accordance with the Local Government Act.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion, Counselor Zalka?
Yes, I will try not to get caught in traffic for that public hearing.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor? Opposed, not opposed? The last item on the agenda, good job sitting this out. We have item number 16, Development Variance Permit for 1175 Beach Drive. This is for an awning request?
Self, because I own property at that place.
Thank you, Counselor Ne.
So I will move the Development's Variance Permit, DVP 000931175 Beach Drive.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? I just want to point out, there was one piece of correspondence in the, in the piece there. Any other discussion? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, not opposed? You have a new awning. Oh?
Your worship, procedurally, you do need to invite public comment on this item.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. I'm just losing it this time of day.
It's late. I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to the application at, at Beach Drive? I'm not seeing anyone. Okay, sorry, my apologies. I will call the question formally this time. All those in favor? Opposed, not opposed? Thank you very much. With that, we needed a motion. Just before we do adjournment, I just want to point out to anybody left in the audience, there is an annual report, a draft annual report that is posted. Counselor Zalka mentioned that, so this is the chance, and it'll be reviewed at the committee of the whole next week. So that's a chance for public input on that item. So, thank you very much.
Question?
Yes.
With respect to the, to the annual report, can any member of the public speak about any item in the annual report for as long as they choose?
It is going to a committee of the whole. I'm not sure I want to encourage anybody to come to the thing and speak as long as they want, but yes, I think within reason, that would be the, that would be the, the answer would be yes. But I'm trying to ask people to be respectful of time. All, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move then in accordance with Section 91A NC of the Community Charter, that the open portion of the meeting of council be adjourned and that a closed session be convened to discuss personal information about an identifiable individual who holds or is being considered for a position as an officer, employee, or agent of the municipality, or another position appointed by the municipality, and labor relations or other employee relations.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in, all those in favor? Opposed, not opposed? Thank you very much, everybody, for sitting through a very long meeting with three minutes to spare.
Just a side note, your worship, that if any comments are, if anyone has any comments for the annual report, staff welcomes those in advance prior to the meeting as well. So, written or verbal email, anything anyone wants to provide, we gladly accept those comments in advance.
Okay, thank you very much.